She'll be here anyway, I think. Good evening and welcome to the January 4th School Board Meeting. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pre-meeting public hall to order. Review and revision of agenda.
I have one change for the board to consider. I'd like to add in under minutes. That's probably where it's appropriate to amend our November 3rd of December of 2022 minutes to add in an action and a vote that was missed in the minutes.
I do I have to is that need a motion? I think it should have been there to begin with.
I don't think it needs a motion.
Okay.
No objection.
None from me either. Excellent. Summary of non-public actions from December 14th. Ms. Ames made a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from November 16th, 2022. Ms. Harrington seconded the motion. The motion passed 401. Mr. Cutter abstained. Ms. McDonald made a motion to nominate Lauren Crowley as a school district clerk with a stipend of $1,000. Ms. Ames seconded the motion. The motion passed 500. And we're moving on to presentations and recognitions. Ms. Widman, Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment.
Good evening. Do you want me to project?
I don't have any. I don't have a presentation tonight. I just have my report. And I apologize for that. I was also late getting my report in as I was had some health issues in our household over vacation. So. Good evening. I just wanted to take a little bit of time and talk about a couple of things that we have going on, some of which, again, I am adding as I talk because I did not have the information when I was trying to get this done for you guys last week. Professional learning, we have a lot of great things that are going on that are building-based, and I really want to applaud our professional development members of our committee because between them and our competency-based leadership group, they're really trying to get some organic growth within the amongst the staff on just best practices with instruction and things of that nature. So just to highlight a couple of things that are going on, LMS has started doing teacher teas. They do them once or twice a week, and basically, it's an open period for teachers to come and bring like a problem of practice, something that they're dealing with, something that they want some help with. And whoever's there during that period, they collaborate to try and solve the problems. It has, after talking to some of the teachers and also to Ms. Grantham, it has been very positively received. So I'm really excited about that. They're also the first school to have some traction with starting peer observations, and that was one of the things that came out of our competency-based leadership group, is that that group really wanted to start getting into one another's classrooms when they were able to be able to get more ideas around student-centered instruction and best practices to support our competency-based system. So I'm really excited about that. And we did have some more inter-reading training, which is the new reading or the piloted reading program that was actually quite successful right before break. Timing was not great, but that was when we could get them in. So. And something that we actually solidified over break, and I wasn't aware it was finalized yet, was we actually, and I want to give a shout out to Elan Pellon, because she's been working with the Friends of A- Aim, which is a group in the state that does a backpack program for when there's a loss in schools. So whether it's a a loss of a student within a school or a loss of a family member for an individual student, it's basically a bag of tips and tricks to help work with this kids through that. So we have them coming in. It's they actually are doing it voluntarily. They're working with us, and we've asked Hudson and Pellon have both asked to join us, and we have the space to be able to allow that to happen. So it's really, it's a it's a really exciting opportunity for us to have one more level of support for our kiddos that are dealing with some trauma. So I will report out more on that once we have the training, which is next week. In terms of grading and reporting, we are, we have a few things that are came out of our last meeting. We are working on our academic rubric descriptors. There has been some conversation around whether or not the language on the work-study practices is appropriate for the academic rubrics. The general consensus, and it's just in first drafts, is that it is. We just need, we want to do some tweaking of the wording in general. So. The other thing that has come back to that group is that the revised work-study practices were having some some issues with some of the wording, maybe too advanced for certain grade levels. And so I've asked the membership in the buildings to just keep track of what they're struggling with, and we'll work on solutions around that during the course of the end of this year. I do have one thing from PERC that needs board approval. First of all, I do have, I said new course highlights of the Program of Studies, but really, there was only a name change. So and I know Val's going to talk about that with the Program of Studies. The other thing that needs board approval are the revised library competencies. I shouldn't say revised. They're not really revised. They're new. We didn't have elementary library competencies. We had, we were using our our tech competencies with the middle school library because it made sense based on how she was implementing her curriculum. But we did not have them at the elementary school, and they didn't really reflect the library media specialist standards. So what you what's linked in there are the actual competencies written based out of the AASL. She's not here. I thought Karen might be here. She would help me with that. The American Association of School Libraries.
So this is for GMS only?
It's actually for GMS and LMS, but LMS, because they're mid-year, she's going to stay with the competencies that she's been using all year, and will implement these next year at the start of next school year. GMS has been only collecting data on work-study practices so far, and these will be put in place for second semester for GMS. So. Other than that, I just, we have some.
How are students like rated against these competencies for library? How does that work?
So they're still working on that right now. It basically, just like with anything else, each one of those competencies has standards that go underneath them. And Karen has been working very closely with Melina and Amy to ensure that. So library has like grade spans, much like like English and math are are individual grades. Library is more like social studies that has spans in it. It'll be like K to three, three to five. So they look at those standards and say, okay, what do we what do we hit in this year? What do we hit in this year? What do we hit in this year? And they feed into those three. There's three competencies that. So those are the three main areas that the standards fall under within. So any question on the competencies?
Is this something that you need board action on tonight?
I I need, whether you typically with something like this, because it's already gone through PERC, we don't do two reads. We only do one, but.
I'm fine. I'll make a motion to approve library competencies as written.
Second. Did I miss a meeting?
You're not on PERC anymore.
Not on PERC?
No, you are on PERC.
You are on PERC.
And you came in late to the meeting.
You did this before I got there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because I was in Hudson. I couldn't get a signal. Yeah, that's right.
Like, no, I know. I knew you were there.
All those in favor? Any other questions? Really think I hate this chair. No, that's fine. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
Thank you. Just the last thing is that we, all of our statewide data, with the exception of this year's SATs, which we haven't taken yet, last year's are out, but everything is has been released by the state. We have our PSAT data, which you'll hear a little bit more about tonight, and we're in the process of looking at the data, looking at it in our PLCs, really digging into it. And the other thing that we're starting to create is a bank of sample questions. I actually have been in that most of the day today, trying to pull sample SAT and SAS questions so that we can use those as models to get our kids used to the types of questioning that we see on these assessments.
Don't they sell books with those things?
Yes, they do. No, I'm just, but I'd rather take the free version and digitize it than have to pay the copyright or for
Fair enough.
a book per kid. So that's pretty much it. We do have iReady benchmarking coming up for winter. That's that opened January 1st, and we'll go through the middle of February. And so we'll have some comparison data for you guys when I come back in March in terms of iReady.
Do you want to take a moment to share the exciting news about the grant?
Oh, yes. I actually wrote it down as a. We have, and thanks to to Mr. Cutter, we have received a $1,000 grant with First Book, which supports schools that for us, because we are a Title I school, we qualify for it. And so we are looking, I have to work with the principals to look at where we could use some additional titles for support with our, you know, my my target is the elementary school and maybe early middle because they both are, even though we don't, our title services are focused at the elementary school, we do qualify for middle as well. So really excited about that, and more to come. So thank you.
All right, time for my questions. I've been talking to recent graduates, and the biggest thing they say is that we need we need more tests to get ready for midterms and finals. And I don't know any school that uses a one-to-four grading. I asked 38 people, and no one is using the one-to-four rating scale. So that scares me that we're. I just don't, I want to be able to help these kids be successful in college.
Can I can I ask a question? First of all, I I'm happy to address that. I would rather have some time to prepare my own stats and data as well. But you're talking about a one-to-four grading scale. You're not talking rubrics. How many of those schools are using rubrics?
I don't know. I'm a traditionalist. I want regular grades. I want midterms still, and I'm beating the drum because.
What happened through A through F? You know, what happened through A through F ratings or grades?
Well, they're still in college, but they're not here.
They are, though. We we still use an A through F. There's no part of our grading system. You do not get a report card that doesn't have an A through F on it.
Then what is this 1, 2, 3, 4 that my kid's being graded on in math?
It's a competency rubric. So I could take the 1, 2, 3, 4 off and say, not yet met, beginning, kind of got it, got it. It's the same thing. It has nothing to do with we're, we've not eliminated in any way, shape or form the traditional grading. What we have is it gives the kids actual like information on what it's not just, oh, you got number two wrong. It's you got number two wrong because you don't understand place value, and if.
So you got a one out of four or three out of four? See, that's not traditional grading to me.
But that's not, it goes into the gradebook as a 92.
But some people are using 1 through 4, and some are using, like math is using the 1 through 4, and other groups, no one's on the same page, it seems like.
Is math, there isn't a single grade that should be going in as a 1 to 4.
Even the practice ones?
They can go in on a 1 to 4. They don't count.
And are you referring to only the high school? I'm trying.
No, and it's the middle school. Like, I think homework should count. I think quizzes should count. I don't believe a group project should count as a summative.
This is a much bigger conversation and not.
But we've been having it for five years.
You're right. We have been. And when I was hired, no offense, Liz, but when I was hired here, I was hired to make this change.
It's been five years.
Yeah.
And don't say COVID.
And five years ago, we we didn't even have competencies.
Okay.
I can't do it overnight with by myself.
Maybe.
And if if that's not the, I guess my question is, is that the direction we still want to go in? Because if it if it's not, I'm not the right person.
I want to take it a step back.
Yeah.
Right?
Because I don't think Andrew doesn't really understand.
Right. I don't understand it at all, but I'm new to this.
Right.
So I think like an overview or a 101 session, this is how it works, a lay of the land would be appreciated for my.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But if Andrew doesn't understand it, how do we expect Joe Plummer out in the or Sandy, who has a two kids in the middle school? Nobody understands it. I don't understand it, and I've been on the school board for five years.
I understand middle school because that's, I mean, I, my kids are in elementary, middle. I'm not privy to high school, right? But others are, so you guys can speak to that. Middle school, I receive A through F, like.
On summatives. They don't care if we're getting on quizzes, and they don't get right on homework.
And I understand the vast majority of that grade at the middle school is based upon the summative.
All of it is.
Okay, all of it. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. At the elementary school, it's different.
No, at the elementary school, the grades are based on the summatives as well. It looks different. The report card looks different at the elementary school.
It's not, it's not A through F. It's.
Correct. It's right, because we don't do, we traditionally haven't done A through F.
Okay.
We did it in third and fourth grade, but when I came on board, we had seven different grading scales. And that was a little ridiculous, mainly in my eyes for parents. Like, you have a kid that's in kindergarten, and their grade scale is different than the third grader, which is different from the fifth grader, which is different from the ninth grader.
I love the numbers for the elementary school because they're progressing towards. But when they get to college, everything counts. My son gets counted on attendance, homework, practice, quizzes, midterms, and he wasn't prepared.
So is your point, Liz, that everything is focused on the summative and not?
It's always been my point.
Right? The other?
It's like a quiz. Summitives are tests or projects, and formatives are quizzes.
Right. Formatives are what drive your instruction.
Yeah.
Formatives are what help the teachers to say, oh, you know what? This isn't working. I need to go back and reteach this, or I need to provide more time with this.
Or feedback for the student.
And it gives feedback to the student. Again, it's different. It does. It's really different depending on where you go, what your major is. I'm I'm in a CAGS program right now. I get a summative grade. The only thing that's graded is my summatives, and it's on a 1 to 4 scale.
Do we have a benchmark of how we're doing it in our district versus how other towns that we benchmark against are doing it?
It's like throwing jello. Honestly, it's like throwing jello at the wall. Everybody does it slightly different.
Wait, I mean, are there any state standards?
Yes.
We, yes. So all of our curriculum is written off of the state standards. But in terms of implementation, no, there aren't any state standards.
But in Hudson, we grade summatives 40%, formatives quizzes 30%, and homework, whatever was left over. So they're.
But that's not a competency system. I'm sorry.
I know it isn't a competency.
But we by law have to be a competency system.
They're counting it as a competency system.
But that's wrong.
But how do other towns do that?
We used to do it that way.
Some do it that way. Some do it the way we're doing it.
So should I report my district to the state?
Local control.
I think this would be a great session for a community forum.
Which is what, I mean, we've been saying that for a while.
Yes.
So I'd like to point out the other thing is.
I've always been like this. Mary knows it.
I want to point out one other thing, and much kind of to Andrew's point, but also to Liz's. I'm happy to do a one-on-one session at any point. But I also have put out, it goes out to and all the principal newsletters. It's on our website.
I've seen it.
I do a weekly, I put it on the Facebook. I put it on the district Facebook. I'm trying to find other ways because I come here.
The kids understand it. That's, I'm putting all my trust in a 17-year-old boy because he understands how this is being done.
It should be, you, you should be able to go to any one of your kids' teachers, and they should be able to explain it to you. You should be able to go to your building administration, and they should be able to explain it to you. You should be able to come to me. You should be able to look at the resources and ask questions. I put that out publicly. What if you, if there are parts that you don't understand, let me know. I will put more tutorials and videos and research and papers and whatever I have, because I get, I live and breathe this.
Okay.
I just need to know what, you know, I'm trying to put it out based on what I hear at meetings and what I hear from parents.
Are teachers doing tests and not just projects, like like finals and midterms?
That, okay.
Is that just up to the teacher?
We're, we're, we moved away from doing midterms and finals.
See, that's a problem.
But we moved away from doing midterms and finals during COVID, and there was a very concrete directive to give competency-based summative assessments. That should be going on. It's not. I'll be completely honest. It's not.
So what is that? What would that look like to you?
It would be a a more inclusive, whole semester application of whatever the competencies are for that course.
So it could be a test.
Look, I'm looking, I'm, I'm Spanish teacher. My, my competency assessment would be something where the kids are doing a reading, they're responding to it, speaking to me about it.
That's like a midterm or final to me. Yep.
But it's not necessarily all pen to paper. It might be done with a video, or it might be done all online. It it depends on the teacher's style.
Okay, I just, I haven't seen it. I just think kids need practice taking tests other than standardized tests. And that's not your fault because they have all these standardized tests coming up from the state.
I mean, we, that's, and and we're trying to work on that, too, because we know that we're underperforming the state. That has nothing to do with that has nothing to do with what the way we are grading. That has to do with how we are preparing our kids for the test. A hundred percent. Looking at the data over the last five years.
Well, you're going to see tonight, a lot of it has to do with writing and being able to read and interpret text they're given. You'll see that when we go over the PSAT.
What do you mean? Is it poor?
I'm sorry.
Is it good?
No.
Because they're not taking tests with paper and pens.
But we're reading and writing in all of our classes. So where's the, where's the disconnect? It has nothing to do with the.
Adding more pen and paper multiple choice test is not going to.
That's not going to help them to do better on the reading and writing portion.
Assessment that has a strong writing component that is assessed, and that maybe teachers, teachers are group grading. So I grade it and evaluate it. I hand it to Doug. He grades the same thing. We compare notes. Standardizing our practice in those ways is going to get way more results than going back to, you know, multiple choice tests, for example. So I think.
But I'm not seeing that. But I also have a kid who knows how to play the game of school. He's outstanding at it.
It's not something that we haven't been, I mean, I sat with the high school specifically my first year. And 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 we went over what a competency assessment's looked like. We've sat and done that in all three buildings. I, I can't. I don't know how to force that anymore than I'm already trying to force.
I set my pace as usual. No offense.
But I do think it needs to be a conversation. I mean, it it sounds, to me, it feels like we have these brief conversations, but we haven't really wrapped our arms around the entire issue. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I mean, I think a dedicated hour or so in an upcoming agenda at some point, right, where we can have that overview, that 101, so we're all level set on how it works current state.
Because I think Mary's question is fair, which is, if she's been hired to implement competency-based grading in our district, and that is no longer the direction of our district, we need to have the conversation.
Yeah, we need to have that conversation because it has nothing to do with Litchfield or the, you know, if the, that's the direction the board wants to go, and that's fine. But this is something that I'm passionate about. It's something that I was brought in to do. That's why I chose Litchfield over other places that I had job offers.
So we can add it to the, let's add it to maybe February.
Just let me know so that I can get all my information together.
Thank you.
I'm seeing disabled by my administrator. Yeah. Sophia Fowler, Special Ed Director. Sorry.
So I was hoping to bring some positives and accomplishments for the department, that our special educators and paraprofessionals and related service providers have been working really hard this year. So I wanted to share some of the things that have been happening in our schools. So at Campbell High School, there's an effective communication for the Everyday World class that's been happening. It was brand new this year. It's had a stronger impact across more students in their social and pragmatic language skills with each other, so that they're working actually together in a group. It's provided the opportunity for many of those students who have never worked in groups before to start building those skills. It, the class itself is open to both, actually to all students, I'll say it that way, as a, as a course that can be taken so that everybody can work together. It also provides the opportunity for the speech pathologist to work more intensively in the groups with the students. So it provides that spontaneous conversation language for her to be able to work with with students. So that's a real positive at the high school. GMS has had a lot of growth this year, actually. The, there's been a lot of team collaboration with, let me list this, speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, a special education teacher, a classroom teacher, and an AAC consultant, so that a specific student has actually access to education and is making significant gains doing reading and math calculation, as well as absolutely loving school. The team approach is really giving the student access to education, which has been huge. The, in specific situations, our speech pathologists have been able to push in to classrooms to provide to provide their therapies in classrooms for those spontaneous situations with the younger students at GMS. It's very hard to create a situation where kids will talk with each other. So when you're pushing into classrooms and providing that opportunity, it really helps the the therapy go a long way when they have those interactions with each other that they can guide. When I asked Mr. Mitchell specifically about the preschool, he was very happy to report that it's a very joyous preschool this year, which was really great. The students come to school very excited and ready to learn, that the preschool team is a very solid team together, that they're working, really working on what the students need, as well as with all the students in the classrooms. That has been a huge, huge benefit. The GMS SPED staff, including the reading specialists and supports, who demonstrate day in and day out that the greatest and easiest path for progress and growth is through relationship building, that this year, the special education team and all the supporters have been working on making some relationships with the kids so that they can get more growth and actually be able to attend to their needs as well as they do. LMS has had some really fantastic growth this year. There's specifically, they have a program called the Best of the Best, which is a team-building accomplishment and a competition that happens within the school. The, some of the competitions are such as the door decorating and that kind of thing, but it forces children to work in groups together collaboratively towards a goal, which can be very hard in middle school. But specifically, Stephanie Holsel's group, who has predominantly a lot of special education students in it, has won twice this year. So that's actually a huge feat. And that all the students work together, collaborated, and planned, which can be hard when you have multiple minds trying to come together towards a goal, that they problem-solved and executed the designs. So that's been some huge positives of of collaboration working. Wanted to move into kind of the growth of special education, that we started the school year roughly with 250 students, give or take. That we started the school year roughly with two hundred and fifty students, give or take. Um, one or two, I didn't have the exact number from September, but roughly two hundred and fifty students. There are currently two hundred and fifty-eight in the special education process. So there's been a growth of eight students over the last, last, um, four months. So then I tried to break it down by where the students were. So fifteen of the two hundred and fifty-eight students are in other schools. Whether they're parentally placed out of district or in charter schools, they're, they're other schools. Seventy-eight of those two hundred and fifty-eight are at Griffin, again, that's preschool through fourth grade. Seventy-four are at Litchfield Middle School and ninety-one are at Campbell High School. But that's freshmen through twenty-two. So the span is a lot bigger, um, to note, so.
So beating the kids eighteen and older.
Yeah, so it's not just four years, it's actually eight years.
Explanation, ex, ex, explanation, yeah.
You're welcome. Yes, so it's actually eight years.
That's helpful to know. I haven't seen the outside of our own school system. And so that's, I mean, that's six percent of the, of the special ed kids.
Yep.
That we're serving from other schools.
Uh, I say other schools, but like the students for charter schools are, are ours. The students out of district are ours. Um, and then through legalities, the students through the parent.
You're talking the fifteen.
The fifteen, yeah.
So there, there are students, but they're attending somewhere else. So, um, it could be a charter school and then we're still.
Our students, as in live in Litchfield, but they're attending a different school.
These are not fifteen coming in.
Right, right.
But part of that fifteen are the parentally placed students in private schools.
Sure.
So I, I put them all together.
Yeah.
Um, so our students' needs are growing more complex. With all of this growth and complexity, our special education teams are still continuing to meet the needs of all of our students. So I can't speak highly enough of our special education. They're really doing a fantastic job this year.
How's your parasituation, as dire as it is in every place else?
We're working really hard. Um, we're, I know that there are still openings. I know I touched base with Holly, I believe, this morning. And we said in one of the schools, there were eight, um, positions available. I think it was, I don't know, it was eight across the district. But there were, I remember her saying eight to me. Um, but I do know that, you know, some of them are leaving for, I'm gonna say, other specific programs. So, um, a specific program could be something like, um, Applied ABC, which is, um, ACBA services. So they hire RBTs at a higher rate. So it's, some of them aren't even leaving for other school districts, they're leaving for other agencies.
Yeah.
Um, I think I'd like to note, though, that when you go to a hiring agency like that, you get sent where the need is. Um, you don't necessarily get to choose. So the fact that our, our paraeducators still come here and are still with us show that they really like the choice of being able to be here and not sent somewhere as an agency does. Sometimes do. So, is it dire? We're trying really hard.
Thank you.
But we're meeting the need. I think that's, that's the most important piece, is we're meeting the need.
To the best of your ability.
The best of our ability, but even with our, we can always provide people that are more qualified, never less qualified. So if we're providing in-classroom supports through a, a special educator pushing into a classroom, that also provides that need because we're providing somebody that's more qualified. So I think that's, that's of note also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know how to word this question, so I'm gonna work my way through it. But are you seeing more social, emotional issues have an impact on the edu-? When you talk about growing and becoming more complex, the student needs, are you seeing more social, emotional issues having an impact on educational abilities? Is that where from COVID perhaps or not? What are you seeing there?
I am seeing more social, emotional needs for our students. Whether it's, um, COVID-related, I don't know. It could very well be a social impact because there was two years where whether fear or for health reasons or whatever, that students were home and not interacting. Without those interactions, of course, you don't have those peer role models that show you the behaviors and help you work through those disagreements with friends. So am I seeing an uptick in some of those complexities? I am.
Yeah.
I am seeing an uptick.
I'm hearing a lot of anxiety-driven, you know, just nervousness and anxiety that's actually impacting education.
Um, I think in going back into the schools, there's that anxiety of what happens if I'm not healthy? I'll give an example from my own kids in their own school. Um, that there were several children that had multi-generations living in one home. And so those children were fear of God put into them for going to school because what if they bring something back? And a family member doesn't do well. So, um, I don't think necessarily some of those fears are, are not born of COVID. But I see that they, where it could be carried over simply because of, I don't want something to be my fault or I don't know how to react or I'm now back into a social situation where I didn't have the foundation for how to navigate it. So, yeah.
Do you feel like you have the resources to be able to start to deal with those? Or to be dealing with that uptick?
I think as it's unfolding, I'm learning more about what's needed. Do I think that I have a complete list of resources? No. But one of the things that I've been working on, so, um, I've been, recently I met with the preschool team to actually sit down and say, we need to talk about preschool, where it's going, the direction, what we wanna see, what we want this preschool program to look like. And in doing these conversations, I'm doing a lot of writing things down and let's come back to the table. And one of the main pushes, especially through the state of New Hampshire, is social, emotional learning for our youngest learners. That it's not necessarily about learning ABCs, which will come, but how do I be a friend? How do I act like a student in school? And all of that is part of that social, emotional learning. Through that, there isn't a social, emotional curriculum even starting in preschool. So do I see that there's a need for something? I do. But there, it's a much bigger endeavor, although I've started to peel back the layers and have that, those discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we not having a presentation today?
Well, so I did not, um, invite Karen or Amy to come. I just wanted to provide you the link to the digital presentation. Um, and so, uh, basically Karen put that together, um, after she and Amy presented at the Krista McCallum Technology Conference. So that's like a summary of the work that they did there.
Yeah, it was good.
Thank you.
And, you know, I just think here, we have two staff members who are out showcasing the work that they're doing in the school. Um, you know, it's our tech integrator who is a fairly new position. And I know people have asked us, like, so what exactly does that do? And that's the type of thing that, um, can occur when you have somebody dedicated to that work. So, um, I just wanted to share it with you. Karen shared it with me and I'm like, well, can't just stop with me, we gotta go further, so.
Thank you for sharing.
Is she running that same session for our teachers?
Uh, so that's a great question. I don't know exactly how that has been.
Because she put it all together and I guess there weren't, weren't many people that came to that, their session. And there was some great, you know, she had it planned out really terrific.
Let me ask that question and encourage her to, uh, you know, get that worked in.
Community comment. Public comments shall be made without expectation of a response by any school board members to matters raised by such commentary. Comments and statements made on topics contained on the agenda, all pub- public commentary, oh, I can't make this bigger, shall be limited to three minutes per person and must identify the first and last name and address of the comments. The board vested its chairperson or other presiding office authority to terminate the remarks of any individual or closed, closed community forum when they do not adhere to the rules established in policy BEDH. After that, does anyone have any public comments? Public? At this time, we thank everyone who provided the board with comments to tonight's agenda. Who did not.
Or just came.
And we, if we're here at eight, we try and do another one if needed. General business, superintendent's report, update on Wi-Fi correspondence.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'm ready to go. I'm gonna zip-zip.
Okay, oh, I see your spreadsheet.
Yep, it's there. Um, December fifteenth, Ms. Hershberger emailed the board circulating the final audit RFP. Also on December fifteenth, Ms. McDonald, um, emailed the board and superintendent uh, regarding statutes and next steps for options for a moderator for our deliberative session. On December sixteenth, Mr. Cutter, uh, emailed the board with the need to amend the meeting minutes from November third as they do not include the motion second invoked by the board to put, to quote, put in a policy for a one-year period that allows the fiscal year twenty-four special services budget to be returned to taxpayers if underspent. So we are addressing that, we are talking about that. December nineteenth, um, Michelle Flynn emailed the board, SAU staff and the staff at all three schools, uh, regarding a new beta test site, uh, for the website for the district that was launched and is ready for feedback. On December nineteenth, Mr. Totten emailed the board and the superintendent confirming a conversation with Legal um, to tie up a loose end from our prior conversations that the only way to add money to the capital reserves and expendable trust is through a warrant article. On December twentieth, Ms. McDonald, uh, emailed, um, Mr. Perez and copied the board congratulating him on being named the Assistant Principal of the Year. On December twenty-first, Mr. Totten emailed the board outlining his conversation with Primex regarding insurance coverage and the, uh, impact or lack thereof, there would not be an impact for middle school across. December twenty-first, Mr. Totten emailed the board regarding the manifest and obtaining signatures during the vacation week. December twenty-second, Dr. Jettie emailed the board regarding, um, his decision and intent to continue operations as normal for Friday, uh, December twenty-third, but continue to monitor the situation. December twenty-third, Mr. Totten emailed the board and the superintendent regarding his positive meeting with Ms. Hershberger and Ms. Stevens from the Budget Committee regarding the default budget. On December twenty-eighth, Anne Innamorati, um, accountant and assistant to the VA, emailed board attaching the final twenty-twenty-two manifest and requesting signatures. On December twenty-ninth, Dr. Jettie emailed the board circulating the agenda. December thirtieth, um, Chair Ms. McDonald emailed the board circulating an email from Dr. Jettie to our town representatives, um, with the state legislature requesting that they co-sponsor legislation to increase building aid. A response was received from Mr. Bohm stating that it is too late to put in legislation and that plans for a new school exist already on LMS property. So buying land is a waste of money. Arguments that GMS has reached its end or has, and has been said for twenty or more years. There probably is a bill or bills that may increase building aid, but question always arises to where the money comes from. Dr. Jettie responded and outlined the fact that there was no plans, uh, for a building on the LMS site, that the plans never, never made it past the conceptual stage and that further studies, including feasibility studies, showed the high water table perched pond undersight clay deposits prevent good draining and would require water mitigation in here.
I don't think I got.
I didn't get that either.
I didn't get.
Liz, forward it to the board.
We just got the email that you, that you sent to them, but we didn't get those, I didn't get those responses.
I will forward that, I thought the whole string, the whole string was together in my Gmail, which is why, but I will forward it.
Nope.
Since I read it all out, I will forward it.
There's been another reply that I'm gonna reply to. So if you wanna wait, we can get one complete.
Just do the full loop then.
All right.
Sounds good.
What part didn't you get?
Any of Ralph's responses? Yeah, the last, the responses.
On January second, Ms. Hershberger emailed the board advising that the Budget Committee will be voting on warrant articles on Thursday, tomorrow night, um, circulating the proposed town warrant articles and asking the board for feedback or if it should take a position as a board on any articles. On January fourth, Anne Innamorati, I know I'm butchering her name and I'm sorry, um, circulated an email regarding the small manifest, which I guess comparatively speaking.
This is a small.
Small manifest for tonight's meeting. On January fourth, Mr. Cutter emailed the board, um, with a request to amend the agenda. As already heard tonight, as well as hearing that there could be potential heat issues at LMS. That brings us up to date for correspondence through today.
Well done.
Superintendent's report.
Uh, so, a couple of things I just wanted to update the board on. So we had talked at the last meeting about the Wi-Fi connectivity. And I said I was gonna look into exactly what the status was and what the timeframe would be. And so I have that answer and I wanna share it with the board. So basically, uh, our IT Director, Chris Jamrog, has met with the engineers who are behind the Wi-Fi system that's in place at, uh, the three schools. And one of the things that I learned is that the system in place at Campbell and at Griffin is identical, fairly new and pretty up to date. The system in place at LMS is not so much. It's, uh, it's in need of replacement. So, um, that system is a little bit behind the other two. And basically, he has begun the process of configuring on the backend to prepare for the ability for somebody with a device to walk into one of our schools, see that there's a public access point, uh, agree to the terms that we have, um, in place. And then what will happen is our network will then capture the device information so that if somebody were to use our network in a way that was, um, not appropriate or that violated that, we would have a track record of that. So that's the step that we're waiting to have put into place. And so they are beginning to set up for, uh, student credentials and staff credentials and public credentials. So basically, a staff member who signs in will have more access to stuff than the public would, right? So you have to sort of set up these credentials depending upon which Wi-Fi, uh, network you're grabbing. The other concern is that some of the parts to implement this are twelve to eighteen months out. They're also suffering supply chain issues. So, um, that's part of what they, they are struggling through as they get this set up and ready. And it's also going to be, uh, he'll be able to do some of the work out of the current budget that we're operating under and he has some of the work set into the new budget that's still awaiting approval. His time estimates are that CHS and GMS will be ready to go in the fall. Uh, so he believes that everything can get configured, set up and ready so that when students return back and parents come to open house in the fall in those two buildings, they'll be able to grab that network. And it'll meet all the compliance that's necessary. But he doesn't know when LMS is gonna occur. You're looking at about a thirty thousand dollar investment in, in the system in order to get LMS up to speed. And then when you do that upgrade, you're looking at currently twelve to eighteen months of lead time to get parts in. So, um, he's, he, he said that, but he's also most focused on Campbell because he feels like that's where the majority of events occur, community events. And that's where the majority of the public would wanna be able to grab a Wi-Fi, uh, feed in order to work. So that's the status update. I'll keep the board up to date as this unfolds. But it gives you a sense of the timeline that we're looking at to get this going.
Thank you, that's great to have.
Yeah, that's helpful. So GMS, CHS, we can get that enabled and set up hopefully fall-ish timeline?
Yep.
With budget that's already in place? There's no new budget needs or requests?
Correct.
Okay. For LMS, approximately a thirty thousand dollar upgrade of the system to be able to support that?
That's correct.
Should we look forward to putting a warrant article in place that allows for that investment to be made?
That's the will of the board, I guess. It's not currently budgeted. You know, in the past, that might be the kind of thing that we put on a year-end list to go after. But that may not be as likely to occur this year. So, um, I think, you know, if the board is interested in having that level of access at LMS, then we would have to either add it to the budget or go for a warrant article, um, asking the public. And I can, I can press Chris to get a tighter number. He, he said about thirty thousand. Um, but we can press to get it, you know, what's about thirty-eight? Actually, the three? I'd have to get something a little firmer.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of events that happen at LMS as well. And I, I like the idea of asking the people and let, letting everyone decide if this is something they wanna fund or not.
I think in terms of, if I had my way, in terms of ranking, I would put LMS having connectivity above GMS, but that just isn't.
I would as well.
Yeah, I think there's more events at LMS than there are at GMS.
The issue is that the Aruba system in place at Campbell and Griffin is ready to go. The Ruckus system, I wish you love these names, the Ruckus system at LMS can't do it. So we have to upgrade from Ruckus to Aruba in order to make this all come together.
Makes sense.
Aren't we under the gun, though, when it comes to warrant articles being drafted and submitted?
We sure are.
Well, if you, when we get to that item tonight, if you give us direction, we can have the language crafted tomorrow. You know, the budget hearing is still a week out and you do get that one last thing. But I think the Budget Committee, if they knew the spirit of it was asking voters to raise and appropriate an additional thirty thousand to fund this. As long as they, we can get the technicality of the language down later and we can change the number if it's. the technicality of the language down later, and we can change the number if it's really 32,000 something, we can make that adjustment.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just thinking, if, if they vote that down, then the challenge is...
The public?
The challenge is...
No means no.
Right.
Got to put it on a warrant again, probably.
Oh, you're a 12 to 18 month, what we just heard, backlog anyways for parts, so you can ask again the next year.
Or you can build it into the budget following year. You can, you can direct IT to say, "We need to get this, you know, the other two schools have it, we want it there."
You know what's off.
I think that's a good idea.
Second thing I wanted to just announce to the board and to the public, so Principal Grantham has been really strong at pushing this concept, but it's something that we'll be promoting in all the schools, so there will be a showing of a video, and the title of the video is Screenagers, Screenagers: Growing Up in the Digital Age. And it's really a movie for parents. It's really meant to show parents the experience that youngsters are having as they're on their devices and flipping through TikToks and all the other things, and what the pressures and stresses are that are being put on our youngsters as a result of that, right? So, growing up in that digital age, so.
I looked it up to see if I could just watch it, because she had mentioned it, to see if I could just watch it, and you can't. It has to be done in this group setting, and that's, that's part of the experience of it, so I think that's fabulous.
I think that attributes to some of the social, the anxiety and social things going on in school. I know I have one of those today, the phones constantly, she doesn't want to talk to me, she sent me a text, and then she spirals and all the social emotional stuff goes along with the phone.
So, that will be shown in the Campbell Auditorium, nice comfortable setting, big screen, it'll be a good format. That's going to take place on January 25th at 6:30, so look for that in upcoming newsletters coming out and so forth, so.
Is there an option to maybe have the district send out an email, so, from you?
I can do it.
Rather than, I mean, I, I think it's important to be in the principal's reports and whatnot, but I think this is a really important issue, and we want high attendance for this. This is something that we, you know, as we were talking about doing our own forums on bullying and whatnot, I think this is all very timely and important.
Yep.
Yep, I'll do that, because then it, then it comes as standalone, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, it might catch more attention that way.
Happy to do it. Next item I added, because I heard people talk about heat at LMS, so I want to talk a little bit so that everybody's aware of this situation. We're not quite sure when it occurred. It may have been, and we talked about how I decided to have school on that day before, right? All the weather forecasts, I talked to the weather people, they were like, "You're going to be okay, the winds are not going to be that strong in Litchfield," and then at 10:30 in the morning, a tree came down and took power out at the middle school. We believe that possibly in that surge, it ended up frying one of the brand-new electrical units on the roof, but we didn't pick up on it because we went into vacation mode, and so what we found was, North Branch picked up on it a little bit late last week, and they were trying to figure out why the unit was acting the way it was and not keeping the rooms warm. And so, think about it, that there are two compressors that sort of work in a primary, secondary mode, so one compressor is doing the work, and then if it needs more heat, it'll call on the second compressor. But one of the two had, had failed, it was dead, and so basically, the other compressor was the secondary compressor, so the first one's not firing, and it's also not sending a signal to the second one saying, "You need to help me out here," because there was no signal sent, so that meant no compressor was firing in that area. From what we understand, it appears that it will be warranty work, although we're still waiting for Ms. Bishi to come in and examine everything and do all the tests that they need to do on it. But we were able to have our HVAC people force compressor two to work, so the heat was back on by yesterday afternoon. It was still a little bit cool in some of the rooms today, but there were the secondary heaters in place in order to heat that, those zones, and so the classrooms were in better shape today. The hallways are still chilly, but I'm not frankly as worried about the, the hallways, but that's the situation. So, we've identified the problem. But the other thing that it raised, and we had quite a healthy conversation in our meeting today, is that there's not surge protection on that building. And so, you know, when a tree on Pinecrest goes down, and when a surge is sent through, there was nothing to protect the brand-new equipment that we've installed, and so we've now engaged in, well, what's the right level of protection that we should have in place, especially that we've invested in all this electronic equipment down there, so.
That's true, because our dog fence goes out every time there's a surge, our dog fence goes out.
I know, and even GMS, we had to replace that whole panel, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Big expense, what, last year, I think?
Two summers ago, I believe.
Three summers ago.
So, it, it raised another question, and we, we have, Dave Ely is going back to the electrical engineer, going back to the HVAC engineers, and we're examining all of that, and, and then the other question I have is, when you put a solar array on, and now you intertie everything, what's the right level of protection that ought to be on there? I'm not, not as worried about a surge from the solar, but if the surge comes from the line and somehow gets to solar, it's like, we just need to know exactly how everything should be configured. So, it did raise another question, it raised a potential change order because that would be one more thing to do, but, you know, the flip side is not having it resulted in no heat, and so that's not a good situation either, so that captured pretty much everything from that.
Yep, so the, the only difference would be that the parts are warranted, the labor is not warranted. So, as they fly in the compressor, that's warranted, but as they put it in, that's not warranted. Any other parts that they find as they put in the compressor that needs to be, be fixed, those parts are warranted, but again, the labor would not be.
Is there a temporary fix right now at LMS in terms of heat?
The temporary fix is that they were able to get the secondary pump running. So, basically, the communication between the two devices that wasn't occurring, they were able to trick it into, "Okay, run now and make sure you're providing the heat." So, that's why the heat was able to come on.
So, we didn't run out of oil, we didn't do any of the other things that are going...
No.
We did not run out of oil because we are no longer heating on oil as well, so the only thing that oil is being used for is, is hot water at this point.
So, just, I mean, good news on that front, I'll share, that, so we're 100% off oil other than the hot water. If you remember, we topped the tank off with about 9,000 gallons of oil back in July?
June.
June, because it was, we topped it off based on the last year's rates, right? There's still 6,200 gallons in the ground, and, and all we're doing is heating hot water. So, now we have a slightly different problem, which is moving oil, but...
We move it to GMS?
But we're trying to, we're trying to figure that out.
Move it to my...
I know, I'm going to need some in about two weeks.
We're trying to figure out how to get that taken care of, but the good news is that we did not have to add any more oil in the ground there, and for all intents and purposes, the, our fossil fuel use there is over, so it's just a little bit of hot water, and we'll be out of it by two weeks, I think they said.
Three weeks, yeah, two or three weeks.
Wow, great.
So, that's good.
Is it worth it to have a conversation with EverSource about these power surges? Because to me, it seems highly, I don't know, it's, to have one power surge, okay, fine, but to have two within a course of a year that are costing us a lot of money, it doesn't seem, maybe there's something that they can do or look at or upgrade or, I don't know, to me, it just doesn't seem...
So, it, it's totally worth a conversation, right? It's totally worth asking the question.
Because we are paying a premium for electricity these days.
So, let us, let us engage in that. There's a couple of other EverSource questions that we need to have because on that particular day, when the tree came down and we were without power, it, it was a little bit problematic to figure out what our status update was and to make sure that we were getting somebody responding to it. On the flip side, I think to myself, they were all over the state responding to issues, so, but, you know, I, I was hoping that we would be able to get it restored a little bit more quickly so that we could carry on. Of course, as, you know, Jettie Luck has it, the power came back on 15 minutes before the buses pulled out, and at that point, I'm like, you know what, middle school parents have scrambled, they got a game plan, they know they're coming, just let it be, it's the day before Christmas, Merry Christmas, everybody, here we go, so. But I will, we'll do a follow-up with EverSource.
Kind of surprised that that's not part of the LMS scope, with all the electrical work and all the upgrades that we're doing, right? It just seems, is that an oversight?
So, I, it's a great question, and what, we asked that question in North Branch, and they said, "We see it in some places but not in others," so it doesn't seem to be like a standard practice. They did think that in a new build, it would be something that would be more likely to be factored in, but in a new build where an owner says, "Ah, that's too much money," that would also be one of the first things cut, so it's, it's hard to say.
Since you don't need it for code, then it's an option at that point, so.
But I'm...
I'm interested to see the cost.
Me too, and I, I'm on the side of, at this point, I, I'm envisioning, okay, the solar array's working, we would have been, the trees can come down all up and down Pinecrest except for Tina's house, and we can, we can still run school, right? Because we're going to have solar, so we're going to be okay, except I'm thinking, a surge is still not going to help us, so I just, I, I, yeah, I want to really try to figure out exactly what we ought to be doing and protecting that equipment.
Absolutely.
And then the last thing I have for you is the enrollment report.
Gained a few kids.
Pardon?
We've gained a few kids.
From the beginning, but...
Study from November.
Just slowly creeping up, and we've gone up six students across the district since the beginning.
I did see a post on Facebook, people were looking for information on registering for kindergarteners, that, I'm assuming that's kind of an open thing, so I directed them to the link on the, the student enrollment link on the website, but they said that GMS, the, the information posted at the GMS site is last year's, so.
Okay, let me, let me find out when we're going to get that updated, I think...
I did say the sooner we know, you know, the, the sooner you can register, the better, so we can plan for next year.
January 1st, that's good thinking.
Yeah, they're on it.
Yep, we will definitely get on that, thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I have for you.
Great. December 14th, public minutes?
I did have an amendment.
I did too.
So, under the LMS lacrosse proposal, the final vote, it says 4-0-1, and that I abstained. I definitely thought I voted aye, and I went back and watched the video, and I was like, was I not paying attention and did I forget to vote? But I did vote, yeah, so it was 5-0-0, so that just needs to be amended.
Which page? Just to help me find it.
Page three, top of page three.
My comment about the LMS lacrosse presentation was that Ms. Matthews, it was, Mrs. Burke was actually labeled as Ms. Matthews, so it was Mrs. Burke, not Ms. Matthews, that had helped with the, the C.H.S. lacrosse program, so that was in several different places.
Okay, and then mine, small thing, but my name was spelled wrong in one place, and bigger thing was the special audit RFP, the final vote there was also incorrect, it says 4-0-1 with me abstaining, and that was incorrect, I did not abstain, and so it was 5-0-0. Yeah.
So, let me, let me ask this question. I just put a comment in noting that, because I think that'll help Jan to be able to clean that up. Do you have, Ed, do you have commenting?
So, that was the thing, if she can send it or however it's sent to us, we can have editing access or at least be able to comment.
Comment, I think commenting access is fine.
Be able to do it, and I couldn't put it on there.
All right, we will...
Because that's easy to fix.
Again, I really do like the format of the minutes, I think she's doing a great job, I think other people are finding them easier to read, which is helpful, but again, I'll, I'll try to enunciate my aye next time, so it gets caught on record.
Me too, I guess.
All right, thank you for that.
So, you will take care of those changes, we don't have to make it, or you can ask her to give us edit access or comment access.
I'm going to share with the school board, it's just going to be easier to make sure that you flag exactly where it is, because you know where the...
So, we'll make those changes, okay, once we have comment access.
I'm giving school board members commenting access, and if you just, you know how to do that, right? Just highlight it and put the comment, and then we'll...
That's what we used to do, so.
So, can we approve them as amended, though, tonight?
I'd like to reread them.
You want to reread them?
So, if we can just table it and...
All right, yep.
We also had the addition to the agenda at this point to amend our November 3rd, 2022 minutes. The reason for the amendment of those minutes was, it came to light that a motion and a second and then a subsequent amended motion was not recorded in the minutes, and I'd like to correct that.
Two hours and five?
So, at two hours and five minutes in on our November 3rd meeting, I had made a motion, and Ms. Hirschberger had seconded, to put in a policy for special education, return of underspend for, for a period of time. That motion was amended at two minutes and, two hours and eight minutes in, and the motion that the board voted on was to put in a policy for a one-year period that allows for the fiscal year 24 special services budget to be returned to taxpayers if underspent, and that passed 5-0-0.
So, I will second, if we need it. If you're making a motion to amend the minutes, I...
I'll make a motion to amend the November 3rd minutes as formerly...
I will second it.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. 5-0-0.
So, now, as a next step, at some point in our agenda, we need to talk about putting in a policy.
Whoa, that's big, hold on. I didn't hear what you just said, what?
At some point in our agenda, we now need to action putting in a policy.
I would say, under, we should come up with a draft of that policy and then circulate it for...
New business?
I mean, it has to, policy is first read, second read, right?
Right.
Yeah.
You want to add just a brief conversation on the new business?
We don't have any policies tonight.
No, because we're just getting started on the policies.
Or is that the direction, just to, I can take a shot at creating a draft policy and the, send it to the board for circulation if we're doing it?
Are we, I, I'm just confused about, this policy would go into the policy manual for one year?
The motion was one-year period.
Right.
Yep.
I, I, I thought we, I mean, my thought was that that was the, the action has already been taken, that we would do that, and so we will do that, not that it would be added to the policy manual.
I guess my view is if it's a policy, it should be written as a policy.
And that's where we differed last time, too. We discussed, I see it more as a procedure.
For one year.
For one year, a policy is more of a static...
And that's what's in the conversation, to look at it, right? To see what the motion was, yeah, yeah.
Right. I don't, I'm not opposed to going through the policy process if that's the will of the board. I think we characterized it as a policy, and I think it should be a policy, although the one-year period is, is what gets me, because I don't think any of our policies are, have time limitations like that. Right.
It's, it's really the will of the board, I mean, you have capital P, policy, which is what we're talking about developing, and you have lowercase p, policy, which is, you took a motion and you adopted a policy, so I think it's how you want to capture it.
See both sides, too.
Well, I'll let me do this. We'll draft it, the board can discuss it, and we'll go from there.
I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
Okay.
Second set of eyes on it, let me know, I'm happy to look at it.
I want five.
Well, before you circulate, how's that?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Totten?
So, before all the numbers, just a little update on the playground at the elementary school. So, I reached out to, to Primex, no surprise that they felt that hard ground would be a deterrent from using the playground. I did ask them to come walk it with us again, so next Wednesday, they're coming out in the morning, they'll walk it with myself.
Thank you.
Dave Ross, and then, you know, possibly the admin from the building as well, if they're available, so that will be next Wednesday, and we'll get some more answers as far as what they can't use during, you know, if, if the ground is frozen, and what they could use, and what our options are.
That's all that we could ask at this point.
The financial operations report, this is the October, well, it starts with the North Branch construction with the invoice, the December invoice is, should be done by the end of this week, so I'll get that out as well. The change orders have been updated in the Google Sheet, we have some potential ones that will, that have been approved, that, that will make it into future... approved that, that will make it into future billing for North Branch. Um, and then the financial reports come from November because that was a mix-up with the reports last time in December when we went from two board meetings to one board meetings. But they are there. I don't know if there's any questions on either LMS or those financial reports.
Okay. So the December reports will be available at the next meeting. Okay, got it.
Silence means no questions.
That was my question actually. Yeah.
I still really like the way it's set up. I think it's super helpful in terms of the way, all of the information and the reports that are run. Um.
So one thing I did add to was the, the cash balance at the bottom of the table.
Yeah.
Just so people can see. And, and again, the cash balance is going to be pretty healthy all the way up through June usually, a first school. Um, but it's still good just to kinda, to see that we're not close to zero, um, at this point or as we kinda move forward.
It shows transparency as well. You know exactly, like looking in your account.
Yep. So update on, from the budget committee. So they met.
Just before we jump on that, right, one of the things on the, under the budget that I noticed is the spend on legal, right? Uh, I know we budgeted $60,000 for legal spend and it appears we've already tracked $45,000 in spend with half a year remaining. So I'm a little concerned about that line.
Yeah. I mean, I think we luck out this year where there's no contracts being negotiated. So I mean, a lot of the legal went to the summer as well as September, um, where legal lately hasn't been, it's been back to more normal. So I think there, I think in a typical year, if this was a typical year, we would have underspent that amount. Um.
A typical non-contract year would have had a lot of money left in it. But in a non-typical, non-contract year, which is this year, um, we're on track to use it. Okay. So I'm sorry, there's 15,000 left?
According to the report that I saw, yeah, it looks like there was 60,000 in the budget, right? And that we've spent about 45,000 of that.
Yep. Um, I mean, I just signed the last invoice. It's probably in the manifest.
It is in the manifest we got today.
And, um, you know, it was like 27 or so. So I'm doing the math times six months. It's gonna be utilizing the full amount I would predict.
For sure. Yeah, I think so too.
And it depends on what happens between now and then. So.
And plus they're also supporting us at deliberative, right?
Yeah, they do that every year though. So that's, that's not anything out of the ordinary. Um, we've asked for a little more work like on, uh, some of the warrant articles. So like the, um, the retirement warrant article, that was a, an extra ask. The land.
Yeah. Reviewing contracts and things like that.
Warrant article. Yeah. So there have been some extra asks that are not normally there, but.
All right. Um, so last time we met was December 7th. The budget committee met the next night. Uh, at that meeting, they made additions as well as reductions to the budget. It totaled a reduction of 117,956 dollars. So the budget as it stands now is 24,230,328.
One more time, 24 million? And that's the operating budget?
That is the fund ten operating budget. Yeah. So after the report is the default budget calculation. Um, so before the vacation, myself, Tara and Kate Stevens from the budget committee met. Um, and we've been emailing back and forth since then as well to try to make sure it makes sense to both parties as we move forward with this. Um, so if we click on into this spreadsheet, can kinda go step by step. So again, when, when we start with the default budget, we're talking about keeping this year's budget and then only going up or down by contractual reasons mandated by law, things, uh, debt service, um, as well as one-time expenditures or any positions that the governing body, so the school board cuts from the budget. So we have had several things that have decreased the default budget and things that have added to it. Again, we're starting with the MS 22, which is what was approved last year. So there's a link to that at the top of the first tab, the fiscal year 24, uh, default budget. You can see MS 22 is in blue and that's the link. So any number that you see below that comes directly from what the DRA for New Hampshire has for what we have appropriated for, for this year. And then your numbers to the right of that are either adding or subtracting from the default budget. So we have, uh, you know, things that, that makes sense, you know? And when the salary for the warrant articles got passed, that was Samberneis, which said, you know, this is not just a one-year contract. This is a contract for either two or three years. And here are the expected payments in year two and three. Um, when you go to the default budget, you wanna look at kinda more what the actual payments are because that's what you actually need to operate in the budget next year. So from there, there, there are additions and subtraction. So the first one you can see is changes in the total amount of severance salary payouts. And then it says note 17. And we can see that it's a deduction or reduction of 227,131. So if we go to note 17, not in order necessarily, uh, we can see that in fiscal year 23, the budget was 367,563 and it was reduced to 140,432. So since this is by contract, we have to pay for the severance. Then again, it goes, either goes up or down by contract. In this case, it was a reduction. So, um, they follow suit from there where a lot of them do have notes. Not all of them have notes. Uh, some of them are a little bit simpler where I think like it might be, I guess most of them do have notes. So the salary one is a little bit more difficult. That's why it has its own tab all the way to the right. So again, we're trying to match up the people that were here last year, positions that were here last, this year with what they'd be paid next year. Now in the budgeting process, between the superintendent's budget and the school board's budget and now the budget committee's budget, we have reduced positions. So those positions get, they, 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 they come off of the default budget. So what I did was I tried to find out what would be our fiscal year 23 salaries without those positions. And that's why I'm deducting out, if you're at the tab, I'm deducting out those positions from it as well as I'm deducting out the severance, cause that's not a position. And then I'm finding the fiscal year 24, what the cost would be for those positions. So again, deducting out the severance, changing up the psychologist personnel because that was a tweak that added money into the budget this year. Um, but again, we're going with what would be the case if we carried forward the fiscal year 23 budget. So from that, there was an addition in salaries of 236,786. Again, that would not be a surprise to anybody, like as, as the warrant article said, it would be. I think it was actually stated projected to be a little bit higher than that. Um, from there, I had to divide it back into the default budget. And there's no perfect way to do this. The reason why this became a little bit more complicated was that last year was a, um, contract year. So the budget that, that got put forward was without the warrant article increases in salaries. And then all those salaries got added to the bottom of the budget in a lump sum, which is a typical thing to do. So they didn't get added in their lines. They didn't, they didn't get added in special ed, um, in general ed, in, you know, things like a psychologist or, or library. Uh, they got added all in together. So while we had an increase in salaries of 236,786 dollars, overall in the salaries, we had a reduction of 212,144. That was because we had to net it against the eliminated positions, which were 221,799 dollars, as well as a decrease in severance, which was 227,131. So if we look at salaries as a total, if you calculated it throughout the default budget, you, you took your additions and your subtractions, you would reduce the budget by that 212,000. So as we've been working with the budget committee, um, you know, we've reached out to get some guidance for ourselves. Um, they've reached out to get guidance and we are differing in regards to what to do with fuel. Our recommendation from, from our lawyer is that since we are a school and since we are mandated to be open for a certain amount of days and that we have to provide proper ventilation and heating during those days, that we should include the different rates that have gone up to provide that heating and ventilation, whether that be the oil, propane, or electricity. Um, they reached out to their counsel. Their counsel is saying, no, they should not go up in those rates. So, um, I have a phone call. I hopefully have a phone call with Gordon tomorrow and maybe connect the two of them together, uh, the two councils together. I, I know that there are other schools that do go up in energy rates and obviously they also go down. So this year is definitely an increase in rates. If next year the rates were to go down, then the expectation would be that the default budget would follow suit as well. So energy rates have gone up on, on the budget. Um, some special ed.
So the, the increased energy rates are rolled into the default budget that we're seeing here?
There.
Okay. And the budget committee is, um, recommending that we use the, the prior year's rates for the default budget?
Not the budget committee, the town attorney.
The town attorney.
Yeah.
But that's a different recommendation than our attorney.
Yep.
What is, is, what does the DOE say? I mean, there must be.
It's not.
It's not a DOE question.
It's not necessarily spelled out in the D.
Yeah.
What's the difference between the two rates in, in the total budget, the bottom line of that, of the energy differences?
So it's adding 97,000 for GMS. It's taking away 12,000 for LMS and it's adding 60,000 for CHS.
145,000.
145,000.
In total?
In total.
And that is in the bottom line that I see right now in the default budget?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Got it. I, I think it's an important discussion to have because, uh, you know, I've always said if you put two attorneys in a room, you get three opinions. No, no offense. Um, and so, you know.
That's why you're the only attorney in the room.
And that's why a judge ultimately decides what the answer is, right?
Right.
Uh, but I think that what Gordon has said is that the difference is that if, if a town is forced to take default and can't work within that, they can cut hours. They can say the town clerk is now open an hour less and we're gonna turn the heat down as a result of that. That's not something that we're able to do. We can't just shave an hour off every school day. Um, and we already see what happens when the heat goes out due to an accident, let alone turning it down on purpose. So, you know, I, I agree with Gordon's assessment, which is that we have requirements that we need to meet. Um, and I think that's why he's advising the board, which sets the default, to have that number included in there.
So I, I, I don't know. This is, Doug, this work is great, right? Over the 10 years of looking at budgets, we've never had this level of transparency at all to the default budget. Period. So this is super helpful and I'm sure Ms. Stevens and others have really appreciated being a part of that process. Um, because there's been really no transparency in, again, my 10 years, uh, into how the default was actually calculated. So I, I commend you for that. I thank you for that. How has it been done in the past? My, my assumption is that our former business administrators rolled the prior year rates into the current year default.
No. My, my assumption is that they followed the advice from our attorney, um, and that they've included that because when it, when the law says, you know, if you look at the definition and certain additions and subtractions, that's a certain, like we know the electric rate's gone up. So that's a certain addition.
At that point, we have that contract.
So I think that, you know, I, I don't know that we would ever find this level of detail that would support that. But, but if we did, I think it would include the increase because we're required to reopen.
The other thing too is, I mean, I don't know that there's been this level of volatility and change in terms of the rates.
It's been going down. There's been years where it's gone down, but not, not.
Right. But not to this extent that it's going up this next year. And so again, I think probably in years past, if it was not a can forfeit, was, it may have had a minimal impact. Whereas given the rising utility costs, it, it, $145,000 is a fairly significant.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some money.
I think the other thing, there's been some legislative action around default budget, trying to clarify exactly what it means and how it's calculated. So, you know, Doug came out of the training by the municipal association. And in that training, they clearly said, you have to, you can't include that. But again, that's the municipal association. That's not speaking to the school side of it, right? So, um, cause when he came to me with that, I'm like, you gotta call Gordon. That doesn't make any sense if it's a certain increase. We know. We can see that that increase is coming. And so then we got Gordon's advice and got the differing opinion. Um, but remember the town attorney would be speaking from the municipal side and advising from that side of it. The other thing was, um, the fact that we have to present on this at deliberative, which we've never done that.
Never done.
Never, never included slides. And so that was like, what do you mean, we have to present? And apparently that's been in the.
And you have to take questions and answers too.
And so none of that was an understanding that we ever had about it, right? But we now have it.
But not just us, the town as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And we're gonna do it. We're gonna meet the requirements on that. And it's gonna lead in my, I, I would predict a more lively discussion about the default number. Um, so, but again, it is ultimately the governing body, the five of you to decide how that, how that plays out.
So Doug, bottom right, under the yellow line, it's, there's a total 24078993. What does that represent?
So that, that's the default budget. So that's just a, a check for me. I have it adding up in a different way. You can see that it says also 24078993. So I have it adding all the sales and then I have it adding, and one of the other ones I have it adding the subsections of the sales. Just so.
So the yellow line highlighted, that's not the total.
That's not, no.
It's a subtotal of the appropriations.
So we have food services, special revenue.
Okay, got it. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yep.
So, cause food services self-funding. So whatever they expense, we should bring in revenue and special revenue, whatever we get for grants is what we're gonna spend. We're not gonna spend more. So when we look at the default, it's really that operating fund of that, that general fund.
So it's G108. You, you see the same number in G108, which is the general fund default?
Oh, yes. Right, right.
Then you're adding in food services, special revenue. But he's wisely got the check-in to make sure those two numbers are the same.
Right. Okay.
So this is an increase, um, in the default budget, which again, might not be a surprise to a lot of people because when we started the budget presentation, we said there's a lot of things beyond our control which increased the budget this year. And when the budget committee met at the beginning, they, they said, hey, can, can you put that more into its own table, which we did as well. So they saw the things that were beyond control because it had been voted on, whether that be the salaries for professional staff and support staff, um, or whether that be, we need to heat the building. So, uh, you know, we need to add money for that as well as the fact that the municipal lease, um, we needed to add in 168,000 to get up to the $363,000 payment that, that, that we pay every year. So of this, that the current default budget is 151,000 less than the current budget for fiscal year 24 as it stands right now from the budget committee. Again, they meet tomorrow night, which isn't their only time to add or decrease the budget. Um, but they're not done adding or decreasing to the budget as well. But as of now, the default budget would be 151,000 less than our current budget for next year.
And if energy rates, if the lawyers somehow come to an agreement, the energy rates are past year rates, then this would be $145,000 more or less, right?
Less.
Less, right? And so the, the, the difference between the two, the operating budget and the default budget would be somewhere around $295,000.
Yep. That'd be correct. Yep. So, I mean, a lot of it's supposed to be black and white, but since you're talking about money and you're talking about kids and you're talking about people, uh, you know, try to stay as black and white as you can, but there is some gray, which hasn't always been worked out by litigation. Um, but we're trying to kinda err on the side of, if we have school for 180 days for, for the kids of Litchfield, what does it take to do that?
I appreciate that.
Good stuff.
Yeah, this is an incredible spreadsheet with so much detail. Thank you for that. I'm thoroughly impressed. And I'm sure hours of work. And I'm sure hours of work behind it.
So part of this spreadsheet is, because it's the governing body or the school board who makes the reductions, positions which show up on the default budget, in there I have the reduction of the school board SAU admin assistant, which was never, it was never brought to the school board to vote on, but in fairness and consistency of what we were expecting to happen to the budget, being ourselves, and which I believe the school board was expecting to happen to the budget, which was to decrease that position, I put it in the default budget, but I would still have that suggested motion that the school board accept the cut.
Does this total here exclude the portion that...
The five and five?
Yeah.
Yep, the stipends.
It does. Okay, so I will make a motion to accept the Budget Committee's cut of eighty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars for SAU School Board Administrative Assistant and to remove this amount from the default budget calculation.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I, oh, just a general question. How is it going?
It's...
Right.
It's an adjustment, so keep in mind that we went from a full-time position to no position.
Right.
That farmed workout to other people. There are also just organizational challenges that we're fumbling our way through a little bit, but we're getting there. Honestly, it's put, it's put a little more on my shoulders, because I am, you know, when it comes to agenda development and so forth, you know, a lot of times, Michelle would pull stuff together and then we work from that. And so as we get into a groove of how we're gonna get this done, I'm doing a little bit more editing and work. So you can see there's a January eighteenth agenda already started, and then we're just sort of building that as we go.
I'm just, you know, I feel like we've made a lot of staffing cuts and reductions going into next year, which, you know, everybody I know is pulling together to, you know, put forward a budget that is affordable and, but we, I just wanna be cognizant that we're not overburdening the people who are here left. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, before we make another reduction, that it really is something that we can handle and we're not, you know, we're not suffering because of it.
I think it just results...
This position, and, you know, to hear Sophia, you know, saying that we're doing it the best we can with the staff that we've got and we're meeting needs, you know, while we still don't have a full staff, it just, you know, all together, it paints a kind of a doom and gloom picture.
Yeah, I appreciate your asking about it, but I do think, once we get into the groove and everybody understands where all the pieces lie, we're gonna figure that out. And I'll give you another example. LMS had a staffing change in the front office, and we tried to get a third person in there, but ultimately they've decided, well, next year we're going with two, so let's just make do with two now. And so, they're in beta phase testing the way it's gonna be, but it's really not beta because it's the way it's gonna be. So, you know, it's a little sooner than we thought, but we're doing it. And so, kind of a similar thing here, I guess.
I appreciate your thought, too, because there's definitely a lot of, we're down a lot of assistants, we've been down some custodians, and there's been a lot of people who've been working hard, and there's kids who are bringing in more feelings. I think, it's not just at our schools, it's at every school, so that takes a weight on people, so there's people day in, day out, that are working harder and doing a lot of work in Litchfield, which is great, but it's not easy.
Right. Thank you. I'm good, then.
All right, as we continue...
We need to take a vote.
Yep. Yeah, hold on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, five zero zero.
So this may be crazy, but is there a portion of what she used to do that could be a volunteer role for somebody?
Volunteer role?
Yeah.
I mean, some...
There were...
No, I mean, it may sound crazy, but there might be a parent or guardian that would wanna come in, couple hours a week, I don't know, some things may be sensitive.
Much information that would need to go through their hands, I don't know.
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, because you never know until you ask if there's anything that could be helpful. Maybe there's somebody who has, I don't know, you know, website experience, and if that's a role that they could help with potentially, loading, I have no idea, I'm just throwing it out there.
No, I appreciate it. Let us, as we continue to sort of monitor the workflow, if we see some piece like that that could be picked up by somebody, we'll certainly keep track of that.
So how many superintendents do not have secretaries or assistants for the school board portion?
Well, so it's gonna vary by the size of the SAU.
Yeah, I mean, we have a small, yeah.
You know, I go back to the experiences I've had, for a district our size, we have Barbara, Barbara's taking on new roles, and, you know, part of it is, again, it's an organizational piece, just where things are and how it's all organized, and we just have to, we have a learning curve as we get used to taking on new workflows, so, but she's picking right up on it, and we were meeting today with IT. And I'll give you an example. So, on the website, if you go to the page that's titled Minutes, you have like this host of minutes over here, and then you have these dates with links to all the agendas. Well, all of those are, they're like copies of the agenda that were put in a separate spot, and then a link has to be created and that gets added to the website and so forth. Here's what you're gonna see fairly soon. You're gonna go there and you're gonna see a Google folder, the same exact Google folder that you would see if you went to Google Drive. And you click on the Google folder and then you can find the agenda that you're looking for within that folder. I said, we don't need to be making a copy of it and sticking it somewhere else.
A lot of schools have their policies set up like that.
Exactly. And so, we looked at Bedford, we looked at Merrimack Valley, two districts I'm familiar with, they both have the Google folder there. If, as a parent, if I wanna access the Merrimack Valley School Board Agenda, I'm going into a Google folder and accessing it. So now, instead of making a copy, sticking it somewhere else, creating a link, putting it there, we can so streamline this work by just naming the correct folder, giving the right permissions to it...
Efficiencies.
And letting people go into it. That's an efficiency that, once we get it right, it will help us. We didn't get it right in December, that's why the agenda got discombobulated, because we were trying to get to that point and we didn't get it right, but we will, we'll get it there.
Excellent. Doug?
So are you looking for approval for the default budget tonight as well?
I don't think we can until the Budget Committee's done, right?
No, because, again, if the Budget Committee cuts any positions, they're not the governing body, so it wouldn't be impactful on capital projects.
I guess the other question is, did we in the past typically, I don't remember voting for a default budget?
Oh, you have.
Yeah, okay.
Corey would come in with a number, there was not the level of dialogue about it, but he would have a number and you would approve it, because it went on the warrant, so...
Okay.
I don't know that we need a vote tonight.
Okay.
I think...
We can wait to hear the results of the conversation.
Exactly, and let's wait for the budget hearing, because there could be feedback from the public on the night of the twelfth that the board wants to weigh in on, so...
Okay, okay.
You have, the purpose of that hearing is to let the public speak, and then, I think last year we circled up in the orchestra pit and made some votes, or we can go back to the old boardroom and take some action.
Great.
All right, so next thing is where we are for this year, expectations for Fund Thirty are our Capital Projects Fund, so that's a financial overview and fiscal projections. So as we came into this year, we were very clear with people this summer, again, on September, that some of the shortfall that we experienced last year for the Capital Projects, we were gonna experience shortfall again this year. So obviously, one of the concerns was how are we gonna cover it this year? I wish the answer wasn't so easy, but what it is, it's a lot of savings of personnel. And we'll go over how much we expect to save in different ways. This is, you know, I didn't go every account line by line and see like ten dollars here and five dollars here, because as of now, we didn't need to do that. We are still tightening our budgets, the schools are still kind of protective on what they're signing off on. But if we look at this, we have four tabs at the bottom. We have increased costs, overall savings, North Branch, and the Capital Projects Fund, which brings it all together. So if we start with increased costs, what I wanna do was like say, well, we have these savings, but people are gonna say, well, you have more costs as well. You have, you're talking about electric going up and propane going up, which is true. So how are we gonna cover these increased costs with our savings, as well as what's going into Fund Thirty, which we're gonna have to transfer money over at the end of the year to cover those costs as well? So if we look at our increased costs, they're mainly, we're talking about our energy costs, our health insurance costs, and then the increase in the municipal lease between the hundred and ninety-five thousand, which we have budgeted for, and the three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar payment. So, those, when, some of these costs are offset, too, because again, we didn't, we have, we're expecting more electricity for LMS, but we're not gonna spend a dollar on oil for LMS this year. So you kind of put them together, you know, kind of the plus and the minus as well for the municipal lease. We have to come up with a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, but of that, what we're gonna look to do is use the LMS impact fee for our first payment on the lease of, you know, sort of use forty-nine thousand five hundred of that. So that'll be something that we wanna bring up tonight, but then we'll also be bringing up, writing a letter to the Select Board as well. So, our understanding is that they used impact fees to pay a lease payment or a loan payment for the...
The fire station.
Fire station. So, yeah, kind of follow suit with...
It's in the minutes of October last year.
Which is great, which makes sense, you know, you're using money that came from developments to pay for, you know, additions to the town.
If you recall, we had made a request, but they didn't wanna pay it in arrears. So I said to Doug, well, the easiest thing is we have this lease payment due in March, February, March?
February.
Okay. So, it's upcoming, let's make the request. If the board's comfortable with that, we'll do that.
Yeah, I am.
So then we have overall savings, and again, right now, it's just the personnel in there. And it's mainly just savings for, because we owe money on health, we're negative on health, I'm not gonna say, because we didn't hire somebody that we're saving on health, because that would just be, if we do hire somebody, that's an addition to health. Most positions we have to hire do not qualify for health, because they are assistant positions, which we are still actively looking to hire, the positions that are open. The only positions we're not actively looking to hire are the special ed teacher, which was an additional teacher for the middle school, which they didn't have any people that were, that they felt were qualified candidates come through in the summer, and they decided to move forward with the year without that, as well as the reduction, which we just talked about, to the admin assistant for the SAU and school board. CHS did, they were not able to hire a part-time PE teacher for semester one. I don't believe they've been able to hire one for semester two, they were advertising for that, but other than the special ed teacher, the admin assistant, we are actively looking to hire the remaining of the positions. So, no other positions have been cut from looking to be hired. So they are being advertised, we do hope that people do apply for them, because they would be a benefit to the town, the school, and the students. But where we stand now, we have overall savings of five hundred and sixty thousand. So the North Branch tab is just to let people know, as we move through fiscal year twenty-three, we're not gonna complete all the work for the middle school, because of the work that needs to happen in the kitchen and cafeteria. So once we started occupying this, the school with students, we put off that cafeteria work into the summer. So we're gonna have part of the North Branch contract, which is gonna happen in fiscal year twenty-four. So from what they expect, North Branch expects, to be invoices for the remainder of this year, we will not exhaust the municipal lease. So anything that we have to pay for North Branch this year would have either come from S R three or the municipal lease. So there won't be any funding for North Branch for fiscal year twenty-three. So that moves over to the Capital Projects Fund tab. So you can see, it kind of starts with the savings and then the increased costs, those come from the two of those three tabs I was just talking about. And then you can see there's an elementary project location. So, any money that we spend on the elementary project, we believe would make sense to get reimbursed from the Capital Improvement Expendable Trust Fund, because that was for all pre-bond work. So, the money that we have for now is Barker Architect, their July invoice, as well as some Windy Hill Consulting in the summer for the elementary school, and expenses that have gone with the potential land purchase. So those equal, those expenses equal forty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars. So at some point, we'll come and we'll ask that that forty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars be reimbursed from the Expendable Trust Fund, which goes with the spirit of that trust fund. So that's kind of a wash there in the elementary projects. The next thing you can see is that this year we've also used part of S R three towards the North Branch portion of the middle school. So, we believe the North Branch portion of the middle school, well, they believe it, will be, you know, that four point nine one million, and therefore, we're adding up to that same amount between S R three and the municipal lease. So that will be a wash, too, not really a wash, because we're, everyone's paying for the municipal lease, but it'll be covered by the known revenue. So from there, though, is the other expenses for fiscal year twenty-three. So resilient, that's a contract base, so they have let us know how much they expect to use in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. Introspective, same way, there will be no more billing on introspective, Windy Hill...
Hey Doug, sorry to interrupt, but do we want the spreadsheet on TV for the public to see?
It's, yeah, I've been showing it just in case, but I don't know...
Okay, I just didn't know if we, I'm just, because of where I'm supposed to see the TV and I didn't know if it was on.
Oh, it wasn't on there?
No.
Yeah, thanks.
So if people are trying to follow along, it might be easier for them to...
There it is.
Thanks, Oscar.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you. So are you plugged in?
It's up there.
It's just, oh, he's just got the TV open.
He grabs it off of there, so it's good. If you see it there, it can be up there.
Well, who's plugged into the TV?
Me.
Okay, can you?
Where do you wanna go?
So...
I'm also looking at freezing rain in the morning.
I'm like magic.
All over the map.
Good drive.
So, again, people just heard me talk for the last several minutes about different tabs on the bottom. The increased cost tab, which, again, if we're looking to have end-of-year fund balance, and we have known increases that we're not budgeted for, not expected, again, most towns did not budget correctly for energy. So we have our known increases, increased costs, and then we have our known savings. So if we go over to the next overall savings, so you can see for the overall savings, again, it's personnel. And for January through June, I use an average of twenty-five thousand per month. You can see that we've been averaging over that for each month, but hopefully we will be able to hire some people, so I wanted to be a little bit conservative on that. The North Branch tab, again, the point of this is to let people know that for fiscal year twenty-three, the amount of money that will be expensed to North Branch, or invoiced from North Branch, will be met by S R three, as well as municipal lease. So then when we go to the Capital Projects Fund one, we can see how these tabs start coming together. So again, the top was the savings and the cost. The elementary part here is whatever money we've spent on elementary so far, which shows in those three lines, we are gonna be asking for money to come out of the Capital Improvement Expendable Trust Fund, since that's pre-bond work. And then as we go into the middle school expenses, the money that's going to North Branch will be met by S R three and municipal lease. So now we're starting to deduct the other expenses for this fiscal year. Resilient, which is commissioning, that's contracted base, that's the amount that they say will come out from fiscal year twenty-three, obviously it might vary a little bit, as well as introspective, Windy Hill, DDH, and Niebling. So some of these have stopped. Introspective, we won't get any more bills for this year. Niebling has not done any, engaged in any work since August. So as you can see, we believe we cover it by almost sixty-four thousand. And I think we'll have more than that in savings by the end of this year, because again, we are, we're trying to be conservative this year, because we have... we are, we're trying to be conservative this year, because we have an amount to cover of both energy costs, lease costs, as well as these expenses that are occurring this year. So I did put in there too, like, people said, well, what's a backup plan if, if everyone did get hired? We could always look, wouldn't be ideal, to remove some money from the Technology Capital Reserve Fund, so get reimbursed from that, as well as a Special Education Reserve Fund. I do not believe that, that will need to be the case, but you, you, we don't know exactly how the next six months will go. So this is where we are for this year.
Yeah, that's a different conversation.
I know, I think we all had the light bulb.
Everyone's spinning. Stay on focus.
Yes, yes, sorry, sorry.
All right. So Doug, question for you.
Yep.
Are we there? Can we ask questions?
Yep.
Very helpful, exactly the detail that I, you know, I, and I know the board was also trying to, trying to get to and ask for. Under the North Branch tab-
Yep.
All right, if I add, and if you scroll up a little bit, up, that all, all right, so if I add up row seven, which is the municipal lease payment of 104, right? Rows nine through 14, and then rows 17, so not the change order potential, right? But rows 17 through 22, and granted, those are projected, I appreciate that, but you're over the 4.95 million, not including the change order potential.
What amount is it?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an amount? How, how much is it?
It adds up to 4.98 million dollars. So you're 20,000 over, and then, right, 30,000, 4.9-
Oh, it's 4.95.
9.5 to 9.8, so 30,000 over.
Are you adding the-
And then the potential of the change order, $40,000 on top of that.
But the 4.95 is just the lease, correct? That does, that wasn't a total cost of the project, so North Branch isn't nec-
Understood, I'm just trying to balance, like, because we're saying, and what, what I think I'm hearing is that we're going to have enough money to cover it, right? 4.95 only gets us so far.
Right.
Right? And the costs associated to North Branch, not, not even factoring in the increased cost tab, just costs associated to the North Branch tab are exceeding the municipal lease amount.
Right, which we knew, we knew from the beginning that, that was going to be the case.
Overall, yeah, but-
The, the other amounts were the SER funds, we're going to pay a portion of it.
Right.
Energy savings at Campbell, LMS, and G, well, that's why it's GMS, but Campbell and LMS, we're going to result in budget numbers that could help to do some of the offsets. So that's why we only raised and appropriated the 195 toward the lease, because, you know, the rest of it was going to come through savings. What else was there? I don't think we ever factored in the, the ever-source rebates, because they were delayed, the revenue was delayed out, uh, waiting for the project.
Do we know yet if we're going to be receiving those?
I, I'm confident that we're going to hit the energy marks and, and receive those, but they won't be received until next fiscal year?
They'll be, yeah, next fiscal year. So once our project is complete. So row nine, you would not want to subtract, add up in the amount that you're subtracting out. Those change orders are part of the invoices that have occurred. So that, that changed the North Branch contract, but like, part of those invoices occurred in November, the change orders part occurred in October, so they're part of that 506, 413 type of thing.
Okay, that's the difference there. All right. The change order potential, 40,000, I understand, or it looks like just a plug, but do you have something that you're thinking about that will lead to that amount?
Yeah, so, let me just, let me go back to-
Where, what, I, I remember-
My report.
Here? This report?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then go to the Google sheet?
Yeah. That's where it was. I knew I saw it somewhere. Let me put the electronic cheaters on.
So of that 40,000, I'm, if we move over to the potential change orders-
Potential change orders. Yep.
We have 16,780, which is known. I don't think we'll necessarily meet the 40,000, so some other things that could get us there is that we-
Surge protector?
That, that could definitely get us there.
That could come as a technology.
So, which we don't have a price for. So, for the, the mezzanines, we didn't heat the mezzanines, so we had to go to dry sprinkler heads, so that was a change order, because that was an increase to it. So that, that isn't into the 16,780, I don't have a price for that yet. Then there is a thought that if we end up with the lift for, that, that gets a student from the cafeteria onto the stage, it needs its own dedicated circuit, and I guess what happened in the past, that it did have a dedicated circuit, and then they branched off of that dedicated circuit. So now we have to put a new dedicated circuit there.
Not dedicated, no.
So, yeah, it's not dedicated right now. And if that were to occur, it might make more sense to tie that into the kitchen, but if that were to occur, the kitchen circuit breaker is doubled up and full, therefore, it might need to be expanded, which might need to be the case anyway, since we're going to end up with more kitchen equipment than is currently there, and kitchen equipment, which they're going to be able to use as well. So those are the three remaining change orders that we talked about today. They didn't talk really about too many others, because work is really starting to wean down for, for this year. So I put 40 in there, that, that 40 in my mind was not thinking, you know, if we did some type of surge protector, that, I, I think that would get us over the 40.
Sure. Yeah.
Yep.
Remind me again, just because you brought up the kitchen upgrades, right? That we, we understand will happen in the next fiscal budget, which we're planning for now. How do we intend to pay for that out of the budget?
That's what we got to talk about next. So part of it, if we go back to-
We're good with this sheet?
The other spreadsheet we were on.
The other one we were on.
Is the presentation, 1423.
Yep.
And if we go to North Branch?
Yep.
So you'll see that in February, North Branch is expecting that, that's going to be kind of their, their last invoice amount as, as, before they demobilize. Then you'll see 167,000, that's going to be potentially invoiced around April. So that's a lot of the kitchen equipment that's coming in. So they're going to have it onsite, so once we get to June 28th, they can hit the ground running, and once we get to July, they can hit the ground running with that equipment. So if we go, the next thing on the school board agenda, that is the Fund 30 fiscal year 24 projections.
These were added today for you, so-
These were added today, yeah. This one, down to two tabs. So it starts with the North Branch tab, but then what it does is it expands that to the next fiscal year. So they expect our July invoice to be 441,000, August 114, and then we would be due the second half of the retainage of 176, that's estimated amount. So as you can see, our first invoice for July, we do expect to exhaust, use a decent amount of municipal lease, but then start needing to fund it from other sources. So we have the, the 388 that we believe would need to be funded from other sources. So if we go to the fiscal year 24 budget, we get the revenue that we know about, so we have the ever-source energy efficiency, which is signed, 63,200, that's dependent on the completion of the work. Another 63,200, it would be awarded to us a year later, if it was proven that it was the, the, to the extent of energy efficiency that, that, that goes for that award. But they know the, the work that we're going into, and it's signed, that, that 63,200 will be coming in. Then again, if we do some work, again, this is all dependent on different things passing, and on warrant articles, as far as the land, you know, as far, what makes sense to do for the elementary work. But if we expect to do maybe 40,000 of pre-bond work, we would want to take the 40,000 out of the Expendable Trust Fund again. And then we know that we have that, a portion of the municipal lease left. So we have 448,000 in revenue, and then as we look at our expenses, we have the North Branch expenses, which we just talked about, we have architect fees and commissioning that would still need to occur in order to make sure that everything is being done correctly in the kitchen, and the cafeteria for LMS, as well as some pre-bond work, and then just, we put some district-wide consulting in there as well. So our expenses that we're projecting are 815,000, so funds needed would be 367,000 for next year. Again, these are all projections, but this is where we believe we currently stand.
So that's a lot of numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of finance this time.
Yeah, I need a lot, a little time, I think, to digest, because I did not take a look at these.
Well, these were added later. We were waiting for different amounts to come in from some of the vendors.
We talked a little bit today, as, as this was being added, so what's the ask? And I think the ask is to think about it, because, you know, one answer may be to put this into the budget, and to say, we need to increase in order to cover this, right? So that's one possibility. You know, I think it's-
Actually, I think there was a budget member, budget committee member that suggested that.
They wanted to make sure that we got it all in, right? And we got it covered. It's a known cost.
Right. Why wouldn't we budget for it? Yep.
And, you know, so, but again, I think we, I think we need the chance to chew on it a little bit, and recognize that, again, we have a budget hearing coming up, and we have another chance to make adjustments before we have to settle on exactly where, where it lands. But we can, tomorrow night, with the Budget Committee, we can report, we've got this calculation. This is, you asked us to get a number, and here's what we've come up with so far.
So we have known costs, or projected known costs, we have only known revenue. Again, the revenue that's out there, which we won't find out about more until later this month or February, is Inflation Reduction Act, and if we qualify for any reimbursements for the work that was done at the middle school, because again, the work that was done at the middle school does decrease, uh, energy usage, it decreases, you know, our, our use of fossil fuels, and it's, it produced an envelope which is quite sealed, while being healthy through ventilation. So we did not put anything there for, for possible revenue, because again, it's known revenue, and then expected known, known expenses.
All right. At this point, I'd like to know if anyone has any objections to, uh, new business before the reports are given, to have Mr. Hess and Mrs. Nelson come up and present before our report. Does anyone have any objections?
Nope.
Well, you're too kind, thank you.
I'm doing it for your wife.
Yeah, we'll do the Program of Studies first.
Can I say, to start, the one pager was super helpful.
Yes, yes, thank you.
I started looking at the program, and then I'm like, wait a minute.
Thank you for putting the page numbers on there. Thank you.
Last year, you did so much work, that's for this reason, it's streamlined.
A lot of, the work was done last year, with like, the reformatting of everything, and like, changing whatever things we needed to change, so honestly, there's not a lot of changes this year. All the dates have been updated, updated school administration with the addition of Mr. Hess, and our new social worker, we added her in on the department list, Mr. Hess did a new letter. The biggest change was just the renaming of one of the math courses. It was, we had renamed it last, they renamed it last year to Algebra II Trigonometry, it replaced, um, like, college ma, college prep math or something. But then, like, no one knows what Algebra II/Trig really means, like, on the other end of high school. So when talking with the math teachers, I was like, what are we actually doing in there? Like, what is actually happening? And if it's precalculus concepts, like, let's call it precal, like, people, people know what that is, that's like a standard thing, right? So, um, they were all about it. So the graduation requirement chart just reflected that change, and also, when you guys talked about policy, about the 3.5 in the math, and the grid, and the, all that stuff, it just, it just fixed it there. So it all looks the same. We just took out the sentence of examples of the proposal and contract can be found on the Campbell High School website, you know, the honors option, basically because we want to make sure we're having conversations with our students before they're doing the honors option, to make sure that they understand what they're doing, so I just want them to go on the website, download it, and then turn it in, and then there's no conversation to be had. So we're not putting it on the website, we're just going to take it off. We reflected the course name change in the math course sequencing chart that's in there. We removed Algebra II Trig, and replaced it with the new name, Precalculus, and updated the course description, then we removed the PSAT/SAT prep course, as it's no longer offered. Honestly, that was about it, it was a pretty easy update to the Program of Studies, like I said, with formatting being, and a lot of cleanup done last year.
It looks great.
Pretty easy to do this year, so, I was nervous without Michelle, um, because she helped me so much last year, but it was good, I think I did it.
She set up the format, right?
Yeah, she set up the format, so all I had to do was like, figure out her text box, and-
Right.
I got rid of this letter, I'm like, I don't know, figure it out. So, but I think it went well, so-
Do we need a motion to approve?
So, so typically, what's been done is, you receive it, and you take time to look it over, and you approve it at the next meeting. So you're, you're welcome to approve it tonight and not have them come back, but you've always taken, you've always taken the time period to let it sit out there in the, in the ether with the public and so forth, and then you could approve it, you could, in fact, if-
Well, if we approve it, and then there's an issue by anybody, we could also-
Right, I mean, I would, if I can, I would love to approve, not because I don't want to come back, because I love seeing all of your faces, but I do, no, it's a really true.
We don't need to make you wait too long.
No, but also, like, last year, we were behind on, on scheduling stuff.
Motion to approve?
And I just need to, I would just like to get moving with Andrea on like, course selection stuff, and building, and things like that. So if you could approve it, and obviously, if there's something catastrophic that you find, like, just flash me an email, and I can, I would gladly come back, but-
I went through it already, so I feel pretty comfortable.
Like, I would just-
To that, to that point, when we get to the PS, I do have a question that kind of relates to this too, about flexibility and that sort of thing, so I think, tonight's a good night to have that quick conversation. But yes, approving it tonight's a wonderful idea.
So you don't want us to approve it?
I do want you to approve it, but I'm going to, I'm going to talk about the process here in a minute.
We have a first and a second, is there anyone?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Don't gloat.
Your two is so much better, isn't it?
Obstein, 5-0-0.
Thank you, I, I do appreciate getting that, that will-
Last year was rough, and this made it so much easier this year.
So.
Thank you.
Next thing.
So we're going to talk about PSATs that we took in October.
October.
And kind of go over these scores. It'll look relatively similar to the data presentation that I did in August, a month on the job, knowing a ton of the data and everything about it. So again, there's, there's a lot of numbers, and then I've got kind of three slides at the end for like, my takeaway, and then questions that, that I have kind of moving forward. But if we take a look, you know, slide two, that first column is last year's numbers, it's our school average and the state's average, and then the right-hand column are this year's numbers. So you'll, obviously, our current freshmen didn't take the exam last year, so there's no data for them from last year. We were, last year, our current juniors last year were below average overall. This year, they are still below the state average overall. Our current sophomores last year above, and this year, continue that trend, and then you see where our current freshmen kind of score in there. So slides three through- So slides three through twenty-two are just the general breakdowns of each grade level from kind of each section of the exam. We can, we can look and talk about those as much as you want to. Or, you know, we can kind of jump to twenty-three and talk about general overall takeaways from, from what that is. Because if we look at that, if we look at all these, you know, the, the two main takeaways are this. You know, our current sophomore class is, is performing relatively well. And, you know, and we, we will look to see is, is it that grouping of kids? Is there something that's clicking? We want to make sure that continues to click, that sort of thing. We also have the growth reports that are our much more in-depth breakdown that we're going to use on the backend to talk about changes we want to make, that sort of thing. English is, is the strength from all three grades. Now, when I say it's the strength, that doesn't mean it's incredibly awesome. There are still areas that we need to improve in. But if we're looking at English versus math, the English is where we are scoring typically higher. And then if you look, it gives you those, those three categories. It's close, below grade level, I forget what the red is.
It's need to strengthen skills, close to being on track and then on track.
So our close to on track and our on-track numbers in almost every category are considerably higher than our really needs to improve. Again, doesn't give you how many, you know, we know how many kids fall in that middle category. Doesn't really tell us how close they are one way or the other. But that is, you know, positive, that the red isn't eighty percent and we're looking at, you know, smaller numbers than the others. So I take that as, as a, as a good takeaway. But overall, we can improve in all areas. And I think that we, we need to recognize that as a school. I think I, I'm pretty open in looking at the scores and saying, yeah, we need to get better at this. You know, and math seems to be the area where most gross, growth seems possible.
Yellow.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
So when we talk about, you know, my next steps, that, that first one is the same as it was in August. We need to take an overall look at how math is taught at Campbell. We need to start asking, you know, how are we, you know, Mary talked about this a little bit as well. You know, how are we asking questions in class in relation to how they're asked on an exam? When are kids getting information throughout the year in relation to when they are taking the exams? So, you know, if it's Algebra II heavy and they're not taking Algebra II until their junior year, of course, our score is going to be low on, on those areas. You know, we're going to take a look at these growth charts and really kind of delve deeper in them. I'm a big proponent of creating engaging curriculum and not teaching to the test. We'll talk about that again in a minute. And then this last one is, is really the newest one. You know, the curriculum work that we want to do with math is going to be the focus of our math PLCs for the rest of the year. And there's also going to be monthly meetings between the curriculum facilitators, the department heads. The curriculum director and myself, we're going to start once a month right now. And that may increase to twice a month throughout the second semester and then hopefully moving forward. So there'll be more direct curriculum conversations at the building level happening moving forward. And I think that we, we'll be able to see some benefits from that. Now, some questions that I have, I'm not going to say being the new guy because I'm not new anymore. It's almost half a year. Things move fast in school. For, you know, I took over in July, January is when we came together and I changed the letter on a Program of Studies. So the Program of Study for this school year, we'll have a letter from Bill Lonigan with his picture, which is great. He was part of the development, that sort of thing. But when we're talking about adding classes, when we're talking about developing things, let's say hypothetically, we don't hire a part-time PE teacher. Next year, we can't offer as many PE electives as we can. We can't offer six blocks. So we have one PE teacher teaching her full load that she can teach. And then we've got hundreds of kids that need a class. We need to add classes. And if it's not a current elective, if a teacher's like, hey, here's all these classes that are tied to competencies that I can teach to get core credit or an elective. I know there's perk. I know there's a process. I want to continue to follow a process. But are there ways to speed things up where we can be a little bit more dynamic on the fly?
Isn't it called intervention, though? Wouldn't you call that intervention?
But not just intervention. So we've got fifty-two kids Semester Two that aren't taking a PE class.
I have to pull out of PE.
Because we don't, we don't have a teacher for it. So instead of putting them in study hall, which we had to do, if all of the other electives are full, but I've got a teacher with a spare time that's like, hey, I'll teach a course. Here's what I'm thinking. If we could tie it to competencies and not just make a fluff course for kids, but we can provide them a math course that's called like Dynamic Physics or something. That kid, like rockets, you know, that hits on competencies and hits on standards and we can give credit for it. What's, can we speed that up so it's not an approval process of eight months where then we're, we're missing out on an opportunity? You don't have to answer that now. That's a pretty big loaded question about structures and systems. But I'm just wondering if moving forward, you know, can we?
How would that differ from taking a V-Lax class? My son took one on astronomy.
Because V-Lax class is taking education away from our teachers and kids.
I know, but why would you need to get approval if they don't have to get approval for an astronomy class or?
Well, they do get approval, but it's like.
Because I'd be adding, I'd be adding a new course. Any new course, there's a process to go through. I'm not saying I don't want to go through a process. I don't want to add a class and.
Want to fast track it.
Yes, but is there a way to fast track?
And I mean, right now, I'll give you an example, like, we have, like, like Ms. I said, we have fifty-two kids that I have to pull out of their PE class, a requirement for graduation. I have to pull them out for second semester because we don't have anyone to teach it. And Shannon's classes are completely full.
Yep, we know that. Then who's teaching health?
All of her classes are full. Her health, health is not PE.
Okay.
Health is one thing.
She is. So she's teaching all of the health.
She's teaching all of the health and all of the PE. So any of these kids that were in, it was Fit for Life for a second, right? Except you typically sophomores. I think there was one PE fundamentals that the other teacher had, the part-time teacher had.
So that was the fifty kids.
So those are your fifty-two, out of those four class, the three classes, those are fifty-two kids that are not getting that graduation requirement when they're supposed to get it, okay? So I pulled them out. I went through just my students on my caseload yesterday. I'm like, all right, just like, who do I have? Where am I putting them? Looked at their schedule, looked at what's available. There is nothing for me to put them in because our electives are full. But then I'm like, so I wrote down like needs an elective, but there aren't any. Or can I put them in a study, but now they have three studies during the day?
That's crazy.
Because that's helpful, right? Like, that's not helpful, right? So now, we're working on having those conversations. And all three, me and my other two counselors are in the same boat because we're in the process of pulling these kids to be like, where are we going to put them? And the answer is, hmm. So now we're having these tough conversations to be like, where are we going?
We don't have to be in study hall because another gym teacher wasn't approved.
And that's also tied, it's also tied to what our.
No, and I understand that, but that's not helpful.
It's also tied to our daily schedule. We're having talks about, you know, possibly changing up our daily schedule as well and kind of what that could look like so that we could offer more. So again, all of these things are tied together. But they happen fast. And I don't want to get to the middle of May and we've got this great plan and it's like, well, great. But the deadline for that was February first, so we'll look at it for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Have you talked to Mary about this?
About like adding cla?
Yeah.
Yeah, so like I asked her like the perk process, that sort of thing. So I understand the.
Did you ask her about speeding it up?
No, I just asked what the process was for course approval. I didn't know.
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah.
Two, two, three years ago, one of our teachers was selected by the Christie McCullough Foundation, I think, to plan like a history of hip-hop class. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
And.
It was like four years ago, wasn't it? Three?
That was a while ago. And I just, the one thing that stood out with me is that the class went through, it went through like the process or whatever. It was developed. But then there was something labeled with that class that it wasn't able to be accepted. It wasn't, I don't know.
Probably wasn't NCAA approved.
NCAA, okay, so.
That's for students who want to participate in like D-one, D-two sports.
Okay, so.
Like my school in New York for Senior English, you could take either Film or Media Studies. Film, English course, you studied, analyzed, all that, met all the state standards, was approved by the NCAA. Media was not. So our athletes that were.
Would these, would these?
You just make, you just make sure they're NCAA approved. They have requirements.
They have requirements. So we would have to submit a new course and be like, this is the curriculum.
That's for everybody, but I just remember that situation too.
That goes through the clearinghouse.
I guess I need to review what the current process is. But I don't re, I mean, I've been on the perk committee. And I don't remember, I don't know how long it typically takes a course to be developed and vetted and go through the committee.
Perk. I think it's once.
So, right.
Give or take, right?
But we didn't see, we didn't necessarily see the, we didn't see it from the ground up. We had the teachers who are already in the process, you know, who've already created this, then present to perk, and then it gets, you know, gets reviewed, discussed, recommended, and then it goes to the board.
Right.
But I don't remember how long that, I don't know how long that full process takes. I didn't think so either.
So I just, I mean, only year two.
Are you looking to create classes like next month, for next month's semester?
This month.
This month, yeah.
I don't understand how a student can have three studies. That would, it blows my mind. Because how many credits do they need to graduate?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Distinction is what, twenty-eight, thirty?
Distinction is thirty.
Yeah.
Diploma with distinction is thirty, with AP courses involved, at least fifteen semesters.
If we're in this situation right now, why was this position, the full-time position, not put in the budget? Do you know what I mean? Why was the full-time PE not put in the budget?
It was a financial situation, right? I mean, we're trying to deliver a budget. You're also looking at Campbell's numbers are declining. You're at four hundred and fifteen students today and you're under four hundred in the fall. So you'll, I think, I think you'll have one class over a hundred left at Campbell. So, you know, we're, we're making projections of where we're going to be based on the numbers. And, you know, the, the, the other piece too, we've talked about the PE, the ELOs. We're funding an ELO coordinator as a six-block assignment, ten percent salary increase for an individual to offer ELOs. How many ELOs, how many ELOs are running right now?
I don't know.
Not for gym or sports.
A few. It's really not very many. And then, you know, when we're sitting in front of the Budget Committee, Mr. Barkus said that his child was told, you can't get credit for being a three-season athlete. And I said, that's not true. You absolutely can. It's a predetermined ELO. And he said, I was forced, my daughter was forced to take an elective because we were told that can't happen. And I said, that was wrong information. I'm sorry that happened to you. You absolutely can. So I guess my point with all of this is that, you know, we have to go back and really kind of examine where we are financially, take a look at where we are in the six-block assignments. You know, sometimes we're, we're offering six-block assignments for faculty that are available there, but you're not always filling that. I hear fifty-two, and I'm putting on my old principal hat and I'm saying, I'm not going to get fifty-two people in one spot. I'm not even going to get two twenty-sixes out of it.
Right.
So, you know, so we have to, I think, really engage in a conversation about exactly where we are, what the kids need and how to best.
The kids want to take gym and Fit for Life. And we have so many kids with ADD and we make them sit in a class for an hour and a half and not move. And it's, these kids need an outlet. Tara, your kids need an outlet. My son needs an outlet. So we have one gym teacher teaching health and science, and we have four music teachers in the district. It infuriates me.
But it's, but again, A, my point was not to bring up the budget and the PE. B, never, never a PE versus math position or music position in my mind.
Because you put it with Josh's position is where it fell short, I think.
Because it, it ties together because he's teaching two courses that he doesn't have to teach, but he's teaching them. My point, and it comes down to, and the debate really is, it's a philosophical debate. I can get kids a PE credit. If that's all we're trying to do is to get kids a PE credit, we can do it. If we're looking to build a program that provides kids with the ability to move and learn what an active lifestyle is throughout their life, that's what we want to do. That's what we're trying to do for kids. Not get them a graduation requirement, but get them, we'll get them the one credit. That's fine.
Over four years, they continue to.
It's about providing outlets for kids to move. It's about getting the non-athletes the opportunity to learn what healthy style. I'm, it, it's so much more.
Phys ed isn't the phys ed we took.
Neither here nor there, we, I, hey, I offered, it got shot down, that's fine. We'll have the same conversation next year, I'm sure. We can revisit it. We'll do it every year. I'm here probably.
But I do want to get back to the, I mean, I, I, I think the question is, how do we offer more things for a declining enrollment? I think that's kind of the overarching question. And the speed of the process and the issue with what we're dealing with right now.
Right.
Well, and again, I, and we can, we could talk about this more, the, the declining enrollment is actually a, a good thing for scheduling for us. Because we can offer more electives. Instead of having a hundred and forty kids that you have to fit into X amount of English twelve classes, we'll have more opportunities to still have class sizes relatively the same. We can, they'll be a little bit smaller, but then we can offer those other classes. So I'm, I'm nervous to talk about, well, declining enrollment means we can get rid of teachers. Declining enrollment means we have more opportunities to service all of our students. And that, I mean, that'll be the, the flag I'll wave, you know, for the next few years as our enrollment does go down. I know the projections. I see the writing on the wall. But when we talk about opportunities for reaching more kids, that's going to be what I'm going to talk about.
I'd love to sit down and have a conversation about exactly how we, how we do that. Because, you know, with a, with a, you know, a block schedule where you have four classes, you have eight classes at each semester, you know, teachers are teaching five, you know, we're paying extra teachers a stipend to teach a six-block without raising the number of employees that we have, I don't know how we do that.
Is it a schedule change?
Yeah, and we're, we're talking, we're talking about.
I'd love to be part of that process.
Yeah.
I, I think the ELO, I'm not, I'm not saying for PE, but I think for anything. I think if any student is interested in something, the ELO is a way underutilized.
It absolutely is.
Internship or something at a local place that someone could.
Right. It could be anything.
It can be literally anything, yes.
So I think, I don't know how we get the word out that that's an event, like, we called it independent study.
Right, we did too.
In, in my high school.
And the conversations have happened with, with Julie. It's been on the back burner since September. It's one of those things where she brought it up to me probably week two, and it's been one of those things, we'll get to it, we'll get to it, we'll get to it.
And maybe it's different.
She actually gave a wonderful presentation.
Oh, and she's so passionate about it.
But if you have, if you have a group of kids who are interested in the same thing, why can't they do an ELO together?
Solo.
I think kids are intimidated by saying, oh, I'm going to take a class that I'm making up all by myself. But if it's something like you said, where somebody's willing to be an advisor for them and, you know, they can do it as a group.
I've talked more about ELOs in the past four weeks than I, than I have since I started, just because.
So I would be, I would be very much in favor of, of trying, testing an agile process where, you know, maybe it's a, you know, it's a, how many classes do you think you need? One? Are you looking at one or two?
No, no, I have, I have no idea.
You just want to.
We're, we're just asking. And like, I was under the impression, because Mary always tells me like when the, when perk meets to talk about new courses for next year, and then I rally the teachers, throw it out there. The teachers get something what they want, they send me what they need, and then it goes to you as a perk.
And we did that.
So, right, you did, that was like at the, it's just like beginning of December. So I'm just like, okay, is that the, is that the only time? I don't, I don't know. And I guess that's a, that's a question for Mary. Yep.
Yeah.
So I, because I, I think part of what we're doing is a little cart before the horse here
because we're talking about agility. I'm not sure we're not agile.
Right.
I'm not sure we can't be nimble in the way we respond.
Yeah, I think it needs to go, you know.
Sure. Oh, gosh, yeah, of course.
Mary hasn't been skipped in this process. The conversation started with Mary about perk and that sort of thing.
No, I, I, I don't think Mary knows that we're looking for a more nimble process because we're basically labeling the process we're following as not nimble. And I'm saying, no, I think we want to go back and what is the high school need? Articulate. You have a curriculum director. Articulate it. Make the ask. Let's try to figure this piece out. I think there's all sorts of flexibility that we have as a smaller district to be able to move.
I think so too.
I don't want three studies. Any kid to have three studies.
I'm working on it.
And the other thing, I'm going to, I'm going to show my cards here. You know, when we have a student population that is so heavily engaged in athletics, we're not talking about a sedentary student population at Campbell High School. And so I, I'm looking at test scores that say we need more attention in math and reading and writing. And, you know, so adding in PE electives is not where I am as your superintendent. I'm saying we need to pay attention to how our students are performing. You know, we're less than average high school when we look at the results, and that's based on reading, writing, and math. And so when we keep.
All the students in this.
Sorry?
I'm not blaming the students.
I'm not blaming the students. I'm, I'm saying what we should be doing is having.
Fifteen minutes is a long time to fill as an educator.
Conversation about what it is we want to accomplish and where the ads are so that we can get after the things that you've asked us to get after, which are, I mean, the performance.
So sitting in a seat for six hours is okay?
I have never lived in my career for thirty-two years said, sit and get is the way it ought to be done. I have never lived in my career for thirty-two years said, sit and get is the way it ought to be done.
Oh, no, me neither. That is not my style, but I'm just saying.
Absolutely not. My answer is absolutely not. But I can, I can run a ninety-minute dynamic chemistry class and you will get a lot out of it. And so.
Get into threes. That's how I did it.
That's, that's a basic principle, right?
I like the passion and I like the idea.
Rockets.
So, I, you know, I, I think what we should, we should definitely keep this conversation going. I mean, there's no doubt about it. I, um, I wanna advocate to.
In the interest of time, I'm gonna skip my next two questions. I think they're bigger picture questions. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna, we don't have to have those now. It's just about how much value are we gonna put in the SATs, that sort of thing. Uh, I linked, uh, I had, uh, uh, information, the Every Student's Seat Act, uh, I added information there. Um, I don't know how much, um, the district, um, talks about ESSA and, and, and how the state is saying kids are college or career-ready. I listed the, um, categories there for, you know, what they, what they look for. The state wants every student that graduates to have at least two of those. Um, you know, when I look at those, you know, knowing a little bit about the student population over the past five months, I think that we're probably in a good spot to, to have far more than two. Um, and it, it gives us another way to say kids are successful. The state, they're college and career-ready. Um, and then it allows us to kind of celebrate and give kids other opportunities as well. I don't know if we offer the ASVAB exam. You know, but, you know, the kids not going to the military, check that box. Get another, you know, ESSA, you know, checkbox there, you know, those sorts of things. So, um, you know, just, uh, again, it's a, it's a, colleges are more and more saying we don't care about SAT scores. New Hampshire, that's their state exam. We're, we're gonna give it. We're gonna try to get our scores up. Um, but I, I do think that we can also have other conversations about student success. So. And, um, the state is now, is requiring us to put college and career readiness on our transcripts. That is a requirement that, um, has come down. So we need to be able to say that they are college and career-ready.
So is that based on this?
Just a yes or no, or is it a scale?
You need to have, so there, yeah, yes, yes, yes. Um, so I am working on, um, creating college and career readiness goals for our students so that freshmen will have these that they need to do. Create an Aviance account. Take one of the amazing assessments that are in there. Um, up.
I thought they had to do all that.
It, it, uh.
It's, okay, that was, okay.
Uh huh. So, but now it's gonna be formalized. So, um, and there will be, there will be benchmarks that each freshman has to do the sophomore so that it will say college and career readiness, met, not met, and it has to be on the transcript. So, um, all directors, all school counseling directors across the state are like, are you putting it on your transcript? Are you putting it on yours? And some are like, yep. Some are like, what? So, um, we're working on that as well. And I will have an outline, um, to Dr. Jettie at some point soon. I have it handwritten, not typed formally yet, but it will get to Dr. Jettie to discuss and to, um, Mrs. Woodman to also review to see.
And the students will check in with their guidance counselor.
Yeah, so we'll have a way, yeah, so we'll have a way to double check to make sure it's happening. You know, June, by the time they get to junior year, it's like, they have to do some financial literacy. So what does that look like? Is it, you know, going to one of the workshops that we offer? Is it watching some financial literacy videos? Is it working through Naviance to try to, um, gain that education? So, there's, we have the, we have the system to be able to do it. It just needs to be implemented and hasn't been. So. It hasn't been clearly, I guess I should say. I think it's been just wishy-washy. So, trying to.
I think it's so interesting. I'm just looking at this, the ESSA. The SAT score meeting or exceeding four eighty in English, is that right?
Yeah.
Reading and writing?
Yep.
And five thirty in math. That's flipped from what the state averages are. Math is so much lower than English. Reading and writing.
A lot of yellow. That's, those are the target kids. Those are the kids you want to bring up to the green.
Right. And the cool thing is, is like through.
It's not just us. The whole state is like that too.
It's the, I mean, it's the country.
Yeah, it's not. Oh, agreed.
But the nice part is, is that through College Board, I can, like Mary was talking about, creating, um, sample questions from the SAT. So they don't release those questions anymore, but the PSATs, I can go in and click on like what was number one and I was trying to take it while we were over there. And I was like, oh, can I do this easy question? Please?
It's supposed to be when you grow up.
Huh?
What are you supposed to be when you grow up?
Uh, no, this was like the PSATs.
Oh.
When I grew up, I think I was gonna be an actor. I mean, I know you're all surprised by that. Um, you know, back in those Myers-Briggs things. Um, but, um, so I can pull the questions. I can see the answers. I can tell you how many kids exactly got that question correctly. Um, and that's information to improve instructional practices that we can share with math and English and be like, these are, you know, the pathway to advanced math. These are the questions that were under pathway of advanced math. And this is where we're struggling. Um, so really getting, you know, especially for the math scores, to get our teachers to kind of dig in and be like, where, where are we and where are we going and?
And, I mean, math tutor here, but I work at the elementary level and I think you're not gonna fix math in high school.
Uh-uh.
It starts in kindergarten. It starts in preschool. And, you know, we tried, we did the whole, we'll double down in math in seventh grade and, and hopefully that'll bump up our scores. But I think it's a fundamental thing. I think you really have to build that solid foundation. And if kids don't get that solid foundation, it's gonna take, it, they may not catch up.
Right.
Um, so, you know, I appreciate the focus on math and, you know, the, the kind of, you know, yes, we do need to improve instruction in all areas. Um.
I'm hoping we can tweak math enough in high school.
Tweak math is better.
I think we can tweak math in high school to get scores up. And to get a lifelong understanding of some of the basic math concepts, there're gonna be real-life experiences for them. And give, give them some confidence. I think that's like the bigger thing. Like how many kids like got their scores back and are like,
How many first graders do I see that's maybe they're bad at math?
Bad at math, first grade. Yep.
So, I mean, it's a cultural thing too. It's a societal cultural thing. So, I never thought I'd be waving the math flag. I was gonna be a choreographer when I grew up.
Well, and the other piece is not to treat math in a vacuum.
Right.
Performing well in the math test means that you know how to read and write.
Read and write, yes.
And so that's the other part that we gotta, you know, so sending the scores off to the math department to figure out where the trig slip is is not the whole thing. Right, so, um, but.
It's all connected.
Anything else?
I'll say one last thing about ESSA. It's a really cool thing when you put the power in students' hands and say, hey, before you graduate, see how many of these you can get. Because the kids that are really good at school and do really well in the tests, they can probably knock out seven, eight of these, but they're not gonna get the CTE one. They're probably not gonna do, you know, a couple of these other ones. And then you get the kids that, school's not their big thing, but they do an apprenticeship and they check that box. They do the CTE, they do the, and all of a sudden, they're checking four or five boxes, just like the kid that's eighth or ninth in the class is checking four or five boxes. And all of a sudden, you're like, wow, we're college and career-ready on the same level, just at different things. And students start defining what success looks like to them. And I think that's super cool.
Uh huh. Makes sense. Why do we not require four credits of math equal to English at least?
We do.
No, it says three point five here.
Now, so we.
You have to have four years of math.
You have to have four years of math with a last experience. Right.
Yeah.
So it's three credits of math to graduate and a fourth math experience.
Like accounting.
Like accounting or.
The way I read this, it looks like it could be a half a year though.
No.
Or a half a credit. No?
Well, right. That's where it's.
Half a year.
It could be, it could be, yeah, because we offer personal finance. So they could take personal.
It's their fourth year in school.
In school, yes. They have to have math every year they're in school.
Five credits, whereas English, we require four credits. English math is three point five.
Right.
Something to consider.
Is that normal for other school districts?
Um, they have to have ma- math all four years.
Yep.
Um, how it's worded is differently. At my former district, it was three credits of math with a fourth math experience.
Okay.
So that's how it was worded. It was not three point five credits of math. Does that make sense? The language is tricky.
For everybody. E, there's advanced woodworking.
Yep. A lot of our, honestly, a lot of our students who go to CTE, a lot of those courses count as a math experience. Even health, arc and welding and construction trades because we're measuring, our culinary courses.
We, weren't you one of them?
Which is cool.
The what? The other math experiences, we, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for approving the program of studies that will make Andrea Stern very happy and myself. Appreciate it.
Did you have any reports, we're moving on to, any reports from any committee? Did you have any committees this week or month?
No, um, we have the website feedback that was shared and the board received the updated.
They did.
Um, I don't know when or if we can carve out another agenda item on another night to go through that. Because I do think, I mean, I have some initial thoughts that, um, we should talk about.
Have you looked at? Do you want that as an agenda item to talk about as a board or?
Well, I mean, I don't know that it makes sense at eight fifteen when we have other things to get to tonight to have that conversation.
Yeah, so put it on a future.
I, I think so. I'm glad to also have it now.
Do you mean you have some things to talk about with the committee or with the board?
Well, so I also received a, and thank you, Dr. J, I received a note from, from Chris,
Yeah.
um, with the link in advance of the board link being sent, which is great. And my understanding is that there's no active committee at the moment. It's just, please send us in your feedback. So I haven't been part of the committee. I've had, there's really no committee.
Really it.
That's it. Right. So it's like, now it's at the point where we have the link. I think we need to talk about the link and, and, and the direction of where it's going and provide that feedback back to.
Can we have Chris here for that discussion?
We, we could invite him, absolutely. Um, or I could encourage, there is a committee. Um, and so I could encourage that committee to have the meeting, right? They, I, I don't know when they last met.
I wouldn't mind going to the meeting and being a bystander.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm interested in your thoughts because I've been looking at different websites and different, like Bedford's different than Hooksett.
They're all different, right? They're all different. That's it. It's all about user experience and making it friendly.
Yeah. Excellent. Tina, did you have any?
So, 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 future agenda item I can create. Um, or I can encourage the committee to meet and you can send feedback to Andrew if you have thoughts on it.
That's fine too.
I wrote stuff down and now I can't remember where I put it. I will find it.
About the website?
I wrote down mobile notes, like notes on the mobile site because that's where I had it first. Um, but I'll forward those to you and Chris and.
Yeah, I think, I think if you forward that on and then really that committee should have a meeting.
Yeah.
Um, cause I don't think they've met since, I think it was in initial fall, feedback was given and then the, Kim, not the committee, the company.
Yeah.
Did his thing. And here's, here's the draft. And before they, uh, flipped the switch and bring everything over into that format, we should get that format exactly right.
My first comment was green?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of.
Well.
The splash page on mobile is different than the splash page on the computer. Right? That's one.
A, a, and so green has come up and what we're trying to do is differentiate the four websites. So.
The stools?
Oh.
So you have the blue, well, it's right there. You have the blue, red and orange. And the other two colors to pick from are the green and the yellow. And.
I'd go with navy. Do the background color.
No, it's too close to the blue. That was the, actually.
Anyway.
So we didn't like the, what was it? Magenta before? People complained about the magenta. So I said, well, the colors in the logo are green and yellow and personally, I think green is better.
I like the navy anyway. Carry on.
Anyway.
In terms of feedback though, I do think it would be helpful rather than, I mean, I, it was, the beta test was circulated in an email, but if there could be any structured feedback form in terms of a Google form or something that could be put together for the three different schools to weigh in, I, I just feel like it might get lost in the shuffle particularly with vacation.
It's a good call.
Versus the actual like, what did you like about it? What did you not like, you know?
That would be helpful.
Something.
Yep. I jotted that down. That's doable.
Thank you.
I did not have any meetings.
I did not have, Mary talked about grading and reporting, so.
Yeah, we did perk at the beginning of December. Tara?
Um, so, last budget meeting was the presentation of the warrant articles. Um, tomorrow is the voting on the warrant articles. Um, of note, yesterday, the select board actually voted to use ARPA funds to pay for a demo fire truck, which was a last-minute deal that they were able to get. Demo.
Oh, one they use on the showroom floor?
Yeah, well.
Two thousand twenty-one apparatus. It's not in production yet.
Off the line on this year, like in a month. So the benefit of it is that it won't take two years for delivery. Um, so, uh, voted to use ARPA to pay for the demo fire truck, which will appear as a warrant for voting. Um, so that's the update there. Um, emergency management, um, thanks to Fire Captain Hubbard and Mr. Brunel for coming from the town.
We have a new fire chief?
We have an interim.
Still interim?
Um, interim.
I swore, I saw it somewhere that.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know. What can I ask?
Um, Doug Nichols was at the Select Ben Board, Select Board meeting last night and they were calling him interim chief. So.
All right.
As of last night, that was the deal.
News on Facebook.
Um, so, uh, let's see, for emergency management, we did not get the second safe grant. Um, that was for access control, which is like entrances and stuff like that. Um, so part of the meeting, we talked about the radios. The goal is to get the schools to talk to each other and to the town. So looking at the best way to achieve the goal.
Haven't we been talking about those radios for like two years now?
Things take a long time to get in the works, right? Um, so we're looking at the best way to get to, um, to achieve the goal with what we have and what is required. Um, so, and then wellness, the next meeting is February seventh at three thirty at Campbell.
All right, old business. Approval of FY twenty-four draft warrant articles.
Just for, I'm, I'm sorry, I stepped out, but did, uh, facilities improvement. Did you talk about that at all?
No.
Uh, so just, the next meeting is coming up. And so the invites have gone out. We, I did take the liberty to invite our representatives to attend. Um, Senator Sucey has replied that she will attend. I don't have any other replies. I will tell you that, and I don't even know the folks who represent the town, but the Lakehus, is that how you pronounce it?
They're like the, I think they're like the, the Manchester Litchfield Ward.
They're the Floterial Ward. I think they both live in Hudson, um, but they represent, um, they represent Litchfield. And so they just replied back this evening that they have committee meetings that night in Concord, so they won't be able to attend. So it's possible that that would also extend to Rich and Ralph. I'm not sure. Um, but the Senator has said she will attend. And the intent is to have, um, to have Kyle do a little bit of a deeper dive in exactly where we are with the building aid. And, um, just so that everybody's aware of that status. And we also have begun, um, getting some information back on the piece of property. So, uh, Novus has done a little bit more wetland mapping. And it's presented a little bit more of a challenge than we thought it was going to, but it's all resolvable. So, um, Kyle has a preliminary draft of how he envisions sighting on there. Um, and so we'll have all of that information at that meeting. So it'll be the next, we haven't met in a while, but enough has come together.
Thank you.
That we need to do that. And I'm sorry, what date?
It was the eleventh, wasn't it?
There it is.
Week from today.
So thank you. Sorry I sidetracked you.
No, it's fine. Um, other than that, I haven't had any committee meetings.
So we can now.
All right, so now onto old business.
Yep.
Now on to old business. Draft warrant articles.
So if you take a look, you can see that, uh, we updated them based on information that we got. So I just wanna walk the board through where we are and then get the board feedback and decisions because, um, this goes to the Budget Committee tomorrow. And so we should be able to finalize it. You'll notice at the top, we added Lauren's name and it's the school district clerk. So that's a change that occurred. Article one is still in its present form with X's in there because we're waiting for the Budget Committee number and the default.
An old link.
Numbers.
I don't have.
I don't have Lauren's name in there. Oh, there it is. Okay, there it is. Sorry. I do have.
She's up there.
Okay.
I was looking in the wrong place. Sorry.
So warrant article one is, you know, again, waiting to fill the X's in on where the Budget Committee lands and where we are with the default number. Article two, um, it has been changed because in looking at the purchase and sales agreement, in order to bring it forward to the voters, it needs to include, um, the fact that the school to be constructed on the property will be the Robin Riley Elementary School. So we've added that language in. Um, so it's still to raise and appropriate the four ninety-seven. It still describes the properties the same way. And it says, and further approve the seller's condition of the sale, which is that the district will name the school to be constructed there on the Robin Riley Elementary School. Um, the other thing that's added is that last clause. The warrant article will be a special non-lapsing appropriation per RSA. The warrant article will be a special non-lapsing appropriation per RSA and will not lapse until the closing of the property takes place, once the construction of a new school is funded and approved by voters or by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine, whichever is sooner. Um, the way the RSA is written is it says that you can add five years to the year in which it's approved. So since this would go into effect in FY twenty-three, it would allow us five years from them, which brings us to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. So.
For the appropriation.
For the appropriations, so.
But the purchase and sales doesn't say that.
That's correct, but I think that, um, you know, we know the purchase and sales has a two-year window on it. Um, but we also know that, um, Mrs. Riley is not interested in doing anything other than building a school there. And if this is funded and a, a bond project fails, um, and we go back to her to say, hey, we've got, we've got the money to buy the land, but we just need to get the school approved. Um, would she entertain continuing that? I think, you know, she would look at that. I, I, I haven't had the conversation, but if I was a seller, I would say, well, that's a good faith effort to continue to, um, make headway toward this. So, uh, so this is the wording from Gordon that gives the district the flexibility I think it would need. Um, but I still think we're on, excuse me, our intent is to bring it forward the following year, so.
What happens if, right, if June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine occurs and no school has been approved?
The, so what would be at stake is the four ninety-seven that we have carried on the books.
Right, so that land then goes back to the, to the seller.
The funding.
That's correct, and the funding would go back to the taxpayers. So the four ninety-seven would be carried on the books as, um, as money that we have for the purchase, but we never would have closed on it because the school never would have been.
I see. So the, 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 the actual payment of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand to the seller is contingent upon the school passing.
Correct.
Correct.
It's not a separate, we're paying four hundred and ninety-seven thousand then, and then owning the land.
Right.
Which was the intent, intent all along that Ms. Riley's been clear about it not wanting to be.
Yeah, I'm just, I think to the earlier point, I don't think that aligns the purchase and sales.
Okay.
No, the purchase and sales says, uh, yeah, two years.
Right.
And, but, you know, the purchase and sales is silent on what would happen at the end of that second year.
It knows it could be amended.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is she's made it very clear, sell the land to build this school. And if we said, hey, we tried, it didn't get funded, we'd like to try again next year based on the feedback that we got um, and bring another warrant article, can we extend the purchase and sales? And then you can amend the purchase and sales. It's like any other thing.
You could say six hundred thousand.
But this covers us legally.
Yeah, then she can change the amount.
Right.
She could, yeah.
But we would still have this appropriation towards it.
Final power purchase agreement solar.
Uh, oh, no, sorry. Article three.
Good try, Liz.
I'm trying to move things along.
Sorry, I'm, I'm actually mulling. There's so many what ifs and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It really is.
There's a lot to think about with it, but to me, uh, this, this allows us to make the pitch to the taxpayers that, and, and the other thing is you got to remember, um, the whole idea of building aid. Um, we need to show the state to stay on the list now. We need to show the state that we're making good faith effort to get the school. And, you know, frankly, if the taxpayers approve this this year, that's a really big step and a good faith effort. So, um, I think all of this just allows us to keep showing why we should be able to, uh, stay on the list. And then if we can get the pool increase so that potentially more can arrive in our pockets, that would be another bonus out of all this, so.
Well, to me, this also answers the question that has been posed about what happens if we, if the town approves buying the land at the four ninety-seven, but we aren't able to build a school? Can it be donated for conservation, I think was the question, and this clearly responds to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is good. I think we're answering questions with it, so.
So article three, article three is, and we did not, Doug and I met and we were trying to figure out what sequence to put these in and we decided to leave them in the, in the sequence you last saw them. So article three is the one twenty-five going into the capital improvements expendable trust. But we inserted the language upfront, raise and appropriate thirty-five percent of the June thirtieth unassigned fund balance up to a sum of one twenty-five. So we basically said, let's take whatever is left, thirty-five percent will go into this. If you look at article four, which was putting money into the building maintenance capital reserve, trying to replenish that, um, we did another thirty-five percent. So now you're at seventy percent of the fund balance. And then article five, which is the new article for the health insurance, um, or the insurance pool, I guess, uh, no, retirement pool. Severance, thank you. Severance, um, we put in the, uh, remaining twenty percent, so.
Thirty percent.
Thirty. Oh, there it is. Okay, yeah.
Because thirty-five and thirty-five is seventy.
So each of the buckets get something.
So what we're trying to do is this was the percentage way that Gordon recommended, Gordon suggested.
Gordon, yep, may have said, yep, if you want to make sure each gets something, you can do a percent.
That's great.
The, the one thing is we're looking for the board to say, yeah, the spirit of this is right or the percentages are right. Um, and then we need to go back to Gordon to say, is the language right? We need to make sure that we have that or, you know, it goes off to DRA and they would, um, they may adjust the actual wording of it, but we, we think this is the way to do it. We just have to verify that, so. Um, so I guess what I'm asking is more the spirit of the board. Are you at thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty?
I'll be honest, my instinct would be to say to put more towards the, um, number four, building maintenance, putting those reserves back, because that's the one that concerns me if something major happens.
Right, I agree with that. It took the biggest hit.
Well, they all took a big hit. They really did.
And article four is the rainy day.
Rainy day fund, like.
Is what we need.
Like a surge happens and we have to, and it's not under warranty and we have to replace something. And so that, that's the one to me that I think.
Should have a higher.
To me, it might, I don't know what that is, but that's the one that I'm more interested in replenishing.
Could we do forty, thirty? Forty on four, thirty on three and thirty on fi- five?
Or fifty, twenty, twenty.
I know we talked about the spirit of these articles and I, I certainly appreciate the, the, um, the feedback from, from council on, on the need for the article itself. I don't see at the end of the year us having the money to do this in the first place.
Look, we may not, but if we do, then I think we should have something in there to. And there's no harm if it doesn't.
Right, exactly. This is, this, this is exclusive of any underspend in the special education fund.
Correct.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, again, the special, I, my understanding, special education is just for the year twenty-four.
Right, forgot, sorry.
I know where you're going.
Yeah.
I, I don't feel very strongly about what the percentages are, I guess. So if it's forty, thirty, thirty, I'm fine with that. Again, my, my goal would be I want to see a, a little bit more money go into that rainy day, the building maintenance capital reserve fund.
I agree with that.
I agree.
If we can't get to the one twenty-five, because they're, they're evenly allocated if we have the money for both.
So the one twenty-five is really a holdover from what we've been doing the last few years. That's like a historical number.
That's in the catalog plan.
You know, if you go back to the presentation Doug made, you're talking a total of kind of known sixty thousand. There's probably more to come, but you're not getting to one twenty-five plus one twenty-five. It's, you know, so.
Right.
Um, but still, I think some good faith effort to begin to replenish those would be appreciated by the taxpayers. And I think you're right. If you think about the feedback we've gotten, um, you know, the thing that concerns people most is the Holy Smokes account. That's the one that you want to make sure you've got something.
I mean, would anyone object to fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five for the other ones instead of forty, thirty, thirty?
Well, I think the other thing.
I was like fifty, forty, ten.
Uh, because I look at article five, you know, this is a tricky one because you're going to start to build that up and really that should be your buffer for when a whole lot of people retire and you're not trying to spike.
So what's the right amount?
Part of the budget, but I don't know that you build that up to three quarters of a million dollars and sit on it.
We had the huge retirement last year.
That's going to take some real careful budgeting.
Last year was abnorm- I think COVID wore people out and we had a lot of retirements last year. A few here and there before, but that was a big hit.
Alec Andrews, fifty, forty, ten.
Fifty, forty, ten. Fifty for four, thirty for three and ten for five.
Hang on a minute. So fifty for four.
And can we reorder them? I mean, if this is the fifty percent, can we put that, switch that with the, yeah.
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. It outlines the priority.
Switch three and four.
Yeah, exactly.
Great.
Current four, but hopefully, but we should move that up to.
That's on a four.
So forty, so they're forty, fifty, ten, and I'm going to switch, you know, I'm just going to change the number right now. I'm going to call this four. We'll, we'll move, we'll cut base later. Uh, and I'm going to call this three, because that's really what you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll clean it up later.
I think that shows the priority of the board, that that is more important for us to.
It is, yeah.
To replenish.
Mm-hmm.
Good, good. Anything else on draft warrant?
Well, yes.
There we go. Go for it.
Right. We had a discussion earlier this evening about wifi and I think some wheels started to turn with, with the, the technology reserve account and if that's an opportunity. Or if that should be a warrant article.
How much is in the technology reserve fund?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, so I think.
That would ish, once we know what close to thirty is.
So I don't think we, we don't need a warrant article if we're going to be taking the thirty from the seventy-seven, correct? That would be the five of us.
I, I think the board are agents to expend that, so.
You are. Yep.
That's where I would lean towards rather than doing a warrant article.
That was a great suggestion or a great thought.
We all had it.
We all had it at the same time.
The magic number, everyone's head perks up.
I will, if, if you're comfortable with it, I'll ask Chris to get a number from Aruba so that we can, what would that actually cost? And then we can talk about doing that. I'll, I'll also ask Chris if he, you know, because I think that's partly your rainy day account too.
Yeah, if he foresees any need.
Well, I was thinking about that. I, I consider this, I mean, this, the wifi issue came to light because of the triple evacuation that we had to do for safety. So in my mind, this is, this is addressing that.
It is.
It is. The other thing I would say is it, I mean, I assume it clearly by the name of it, the technology, whatever it is, it's, it would fall under that, but I would still want to pull the language of the fund to make sure this is aligned with it, the purpose.
Purpose of funding the acquisition and replacement of hardware, software and other technology equipment.
There you go.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
I mean, I would want to go back or look at how we can then replenish at some point.
Absolutely.
I don't know if that happens to happen this year, but certainly.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to replenish other priorities.
Too much, I know.
So I think maybe that's next year.
We've been very proactive on the technology front. I, I know, um, Chris and, um, Jason Pelletier before him were very, very, um, cognizant of, you know, looking, looking ten, five to ten years down the road and what are we going to need and what are we going to need it?
Yeah, service costs a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Don't we knew it or came from home?
I'll, I'll see how quickly Chris can get us a number on that.
I would also be interested in hearing a number, and it sounds like you're doing it anyway, for surge protection and whether or not protecting our technology, does this fall under that?
So I, I think we have, um, I could be wrong about this, but I, I believe there's like a, like a smaller surge protector that's in place before the technology equipment.
Yeah.
But it's not going to stop a surge from getting in the building. We're talking about building wide protection.
Yeah.
And, um.
Well, you're going to be talking to every source.
And my other question is, is there grant opportunities anywhere for that type of?
Yeah.
It, you know, protection. It may not be, whether it be the wifi or whether it be the surge protection, but is there some type of grant opportunity, systems?
Yeah, I'm, so I believe Chris does have access to E-Rate, so.
So we'll have to.
I don't know what he's using that for now. It might be just to offset our internet.
We'll ask those questions. Those are. I want to too about rural, qualify as rural or not, but.
Yeah, so we'll check out the insurance too, as far as once we get the price for, for labor, whether it makes sense to file an insurance claim for that or not. Um, hopefully in some ways it's not big enough that we'd want to file an insurance claim because, you know, we don't want our insurance going up at some point later or have to file another claim. You know, in a couple of months, that, that is much larger than that, so. But we'll, I'll check that out once we get the amount in for the, the labor part of that.
Sorry. So you, so you're good with the five warrant articles, renumbered percentages? We'll clean this up, present it to the budget committee tomorrow. Do we need a vote at this point or?
Usually we vote to approve it before it goes to the budget committee, don't we?
Well, are we voting? I mean, I would recommend voting or, the vote is recommending each article. So we can't do article one.
Well, we, and we don't do that until after the budget.
After the budget, yeah.
Right. Article two, we can do. The rest of the articles, we can do.
Well, I think we can make a motion to approve them for the purpose of presenting to the budget committee with the understanding that they may need to be amended or, um, have a final vote on them.
What would need to be amended from article two through five?
Three, four and five might have to be some of the wording as we run it by Gordon as far as how we're using the percents.
Okay. I assume that was already done.
We changed the percentage.
I, I want to make sure that we got the language right and so we, we were not able to get a hold of legal.
Well, plus we also want to make sure that, that you were comfortable with splitting it up that way because that was a newer thing to do. So before we had Gordon kind of spend some, some money on that, we want to make sure the board was comfortable.
Okay, then yes, I agree. We, we can vote to.
Send it off with our blessings?
Send it to the budget committee for consideration.
The motion to, um, I'm not sure what it's going to be called, but to.
Uh, you could say to, to.
It's not approved.
Approve the draft.
Additionally, approve the draft.
Draft warrant articles?
It can be approved because our vote on them is to recommend or not recommend. It's not to approve the warrant articles, so we can.
It's a draft.
Oh, I see. Yeah, okay. So we can approve the draft, I guess.
Or we could approve sending the current draft to the budget committee.
But I wouldn't approve that because it's not, you haven't split the numbers. I want it to be the way it exactly is.
So I will make the motion to, to, to send the draft warrant articles as reported this evening, January fourth, to the budget committee for presentation on January fifth.
Second.
Boom.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Five, zero, zero.
Bingo.
Got it. Thank you for that.
Power purchase.
So the board had this at the last meeting. Um, remember the attorney has gone through this, the attorney, SOC to K, they've worked out, ironed everything out. So this is the final power purchase agreement, um, that is recommended to the board for approval so that we can begin getting the solar array, um, installed in March.
I'll make a motion to approve the power purchase agreement, solars, solar panels for the, um, solar system? That's different.
Solar system.
The solar system. Buy the whole thing, um, for the LMS project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Five, zero, zero.
Just to clarify, my vote on this is not because of, I'm in agreement with solar. I've been very vocal on that, but more because it was voter approved.
Yep.
Um.
COVID numbers, they haven't been updated since November.
Oh, my goodness.
So I don't.
So hang on one second because I do have them and I'm.
I just think there are so many crazy bugs going around.
They were updated at our December meeting.
Pardon?
I think it was updated for our December meeting.
We did see new numbers, but it's on a different place.
Yeah, it's just maybe a different file.
There were so many crazy bugs and going around. I think every house was probably hit in the past few weeks. And COVID's coming back.
Uh, double check, you should have the November numbers.
Yes.
Now.
To the twenty-second.
I'm sorry, you should have the December numbers now.
Yep.
So, and then I'm going to share a second link, which is just so you can see exactly where we are right now because we have the, uh, January numbers too.
Yeah. Uh, it's literally updating while.
So Mike, is this no longer posted? I thought we talked about where it is on the website and how people can access it.
So we took down, remember the tab that said?
Yeah.
Big flag, all that stuff is down. Um, but now you're going to put me on the spot and ask me where they are and I'm not sure, so. But now you're going to put me on the spot and ask me where they are, and I'm not sure, so.
It's impossible to find on your phone.
Okay. I, I'm wondering.
And I couldn't, I, I have no idea where to look.
Okay, let, let me verify this tomorrow, because I don't know that I could find them at the moment.
Okay.
And I, I want to point one thing out, I shifted from COVID to illness report, because.
Okay.
That's fair, yeah, I.
I'm like, we're past COVID to a degree. We have so many things going on at the moment, I'm trying to, like, rename it, and so.
I think illness is fair, because there is, like I said, a lot of things going around. And it's not like a one-day thing. Kids are out for a week.
All right, so let me add the January link in.
Whoa, what's going on with that?
So let's just quickly look at the, the other thing, too, is if you look, this, this one I cannot make sense out of, but I'm looking at the last day before break, so the 23rd of December. GMS was kind of normal, 9.1% absence rate, it kind of goes along with what you're seeing in the month. And then you look at LMS, and it spikes up to 22.8%, like, more than double any other number that was on there at the middle school. And then you go to the high school, and 25.7%, and I'm like.
So that was that weather day.
Weather day.
So a lot of high school kids, parents didn't want them driving.
Okay.
In that wind, number one. And number two, I'm going to be honest, I, what I read from a lot of GMS parents, where I still have so many Christmas errands to do, my kid's going to school.
And they have their parties and everything, yeah, their parties, it was a.
I have all this holiday shopping, and I was planning on this day with my kid, and there was a hall, the holiday parties were all that day. So, my kiddo's going.
So that's exactly what my sense-making was. I said, I need to get the littles out of my hair.
But most academics is done.
Their holiday parties were that day, for sure.
That's right.
Well, most of the academics were done in both the other schools, and the kids, I don't know, Christmas on a Sunday was weird. It really was.
Put it back on a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Then we get two weeks off.
Although, the day after New Year's was a bonus. That one, I needed that extra day.
That was a bonus day.
On the Monday, always, make it easy, right? So, anyway.
It was just, maybe people were traveling, I mean, there was, yeah.
They left their elementary school kids, it's just the business.
But if you look at the, the summary page, you can see that, I mean, we were high in all three schools that last week. And, and a lot of it is, because the illnesses, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the COVIDs, and you had hardly any. But when you look at just absences, I mean, there was all sorts of stuff going on.
Nasty out there.
And I saw Kelly Chambers today, and she said that her office was like a revolving door.
Today?
No, the week before.
Oh, it was, and the kids all look good now.
She said, today, she's in there doing all this stuff, and she's like, I don't want to say anything. Everybody, I said, they need to get away from each other.
And they needed rest. I'm telling you, the kids look, they were, some of my kids were out for a week, and they came back, and I'm like, I haven't seen you look that good, because it just, they were tired and sick.
Mike, I didn't have access.
I'm changing the access right now, I apologize, anyone with the link, so please stop asking me.
Sorry. Request, request, request. Thank you. And the health screening is, sorry.
So the health screening, I, I have to be honest, I wrote a note down, and then I, I, I need you to tell me exactly what you think we ought to do, because.
So my only comment was to clarify paragraph two.
Yep.
Because it can be read in two different ways. Have you been in a household with anyone, one, confirmed to have COVID or a positive test result, or it could be read, have you been in a household with anyone confirmed to have COVID symptoms, or, or you have them? I think it just needs to say, have you been in a household, or do you?
With, with anyone, including yourself.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't think it's clear in terms of what you're supposed to do if you have COVID.
It's personal responsibility.
Agreed, but it, the top one's saying, do you have these symptoms, and, but it's not saying, if you're positive, here's what you need to do to come back to school.
So is that, is, is number two just if you have confirmed COVID, or is it symptoms?
It says if you're in a household with anyone confirmed to have COVID symptoms or a positive test result, so.
I thought it was over temperature, temperature-free for days.
And the loophole that we were worried about, although technically, they would have one of the symptoms listed in number one, if it was yourself, right?
Right.
But, because number one is, do you have any of these?
Right.
Symptoms. But there are still people who are testing positive that are.
No symptoms.
Asymptomatic, yeah.
And so, I mean, again, at this point, I think we're all pretty clear that it's personal responsibility, and people are going to do what they're going to do, but the ones who are seeking out this health screening to say, okay, what do I do, I got a kiddo, you know.
Wait, so we're allowing people to come to school and wear a mask for 10 days with a positive COVID test?
Six, day six after day five, yeah.
That's right.
It doesn't say, where does it say that?
Well, no, I think that's the problem with adding this yourself in, because really.
Well, then it needs a number three, then, or, or a number, whatever it is, but that was, when I had looked at this, when I had a kiddo that was positive, it was, what do I do?
Yep.
Yeah.
I didn't feel like it answered the question.
Yeah, because I think the way I just edited it makes it so that somebody can come to school positive, which is, we don't want to have that happen.
Well, they can now, but day six through 10.
But they have a, yeah.
With a mask on.
So I would separate it out, I mean, I would separate it out, if you, have you been in a household with anyone confirmed to have, or who has COVID symptoms? Although, is, I don't know that that's a question we're asking anymore.
Right.
I didn't do anything.
I feel like we're just asking, does somebody at your house have COVID?
Oh, I chose not to.
Or are we asking if somebody else at your house has been sick?
I don't, yeah, I don't think, if somebody in your house has COVID, everybody's still coming to school.
Mm-hmm.
Let, let me do this. What, what's the loophole that we're trying to close, that?
That if, if Dan has a cold.
Yep.
Which exhibits as COVID symptoms, but he has had a negative test, then this says that I come to school and wear a mask for 10 days, or I should be tested for COVID.
Should.
Because somebody at home, right, should, because somebody at home has symptoms.
I would be testing every day. With allergies and dander and dust.
So if it's, are we, are we screening for if you have a household contact with a, are we screening for if you have a household contact, I guess?
Yeah, I thought that was all done, too.
We're not screening.
No.
We're saying, personal responsibility, you should be protecting others by wearing the mask and then taking the test. If it's anything like our house, we've done so many tests that have come back negative, it's just unbelievable, right? Because it's all the other crud going around.
Took one on Monday. Still don't have it.
In terms of the, your original question, which was back to December, and what I saw in the minutes, when I was reviewing the minutes, my question was, there doesn't seem to be, number one or number two, how I'm reading this, anything that tells you what to do if you, if the student tests positive. It says you have symptoms, and then it says, have you been in a household with someone with symptoms? But it doesn't say, if you've tested positive, here's what you need to do.
Stay home for five days.
Right.
Wear a mask.
So that was.
It's almost like, have you been in a household, has anyone confirmed to have COVID-19 symptoms and are asymptomatic? Right? Because now, you've confirmed, yes, that you're in a household, but you don't have COVID, this is what you do. And then, three, I have tested positive for COVID, this is what I do.
Right. That's the one that, when I went looking in December, I didn't feel like it was answered there.
That's the clarifying.
But I think what Tina's asking, rightfully so, is that for number two, which is involving household, someone in your household having symptoms, I don't know that it's a thing anymore.
Yeah.
I think there's just so many viral, you know, kiddos are running nose, I'm still going to work and school, and the other kids are still.
People may still come to this and look for guidance.
True.
So we should have a number three.
And the nurses are going to point back to the CDC guidance, which all of this is based on, you know, it does say that. But the other thing that worries me a little bit, they just keep talking about this spike in COVID. I mean, I don't know about you, I'm seeing more people out and about with masks on, and people are worried.
My husband, half of his, tailbait, get, tailgate buddies in the corporate world have COVID from, they couldn't go to the game the other day. Like, it's hitting those people.
There's a new strand out there, so, yeah.
So I, I captured the note, what does a parent do if a student tests positive but is not exhibiting symptoms? That's, that's part of it. Let me just take it back to the nurses, and we'll just review it again.
And again, I think people who are seeking this out to sort of say, okay, what, what, what's the school recommending I do here? With the understanding that it's just that, a recommendation.
Yeah. And I envision this on the upper right-hand side of our webpage, one click, here's our guidance.
Yep.
Um, you could even have a health and wellness tab, and this falls under that.
Yep.
But I think we should designate, designate household contact or yourself, separate those two things out.
So my notes, that's what I was trying to do, and every time I tried to do it, I'm like, wait a minute, that doesn't, oh, that's not quite right. So I'll take it back to the nurses and we'll.
Sorry to belabor that.
No, it's, we got to, and the problem is, sometimes, remember, we went from the three-column chart. We were trying to get it down to real simplicity, however, sometimes you go a little too far, and so.
No, there's, I mean, it's.
Revisit it.
Everybody interprets things different ways, you have to be crystal clear.
So thank you for that.
School board comments. Andrew?
No, thanks, well, actually, thanks, Sarah, for sending over the, the Budget Committee articles.
Articles.
Yep, appreciate that. I, I don't have any comments.
Does anybody have any specific feedback?
No, I really appreciate you forwarding everything. You've been fantastic, keeping us all in the loop. Tina?
I, again, would like to congratulate Mike, Mike Perez for receiving the New Hampshire Vice Principal Award. I think it reflects nicely on our district, and congratulations to him and his family, and CHS for the recognition.
Well done.
Heidi?
I'm, I'm good.
Tara?
Thank you for, whoever supported the Romano's fundraiser for wrestling, that was terrific. Oh, and wrestling, actually, we partnered with the Pickleball Association and did a, a team-building event with the team playing pickleball and learning pickleball, and it was a blast.
Five new courts, five new courts.
Families got to play, so it was phenomenal, and it was so fun. So, if you have an opportunity to try pickleball, it's fabulous.
We all will, and all the new courts are built, I'm excited.
Um, and then, just, I mean, just a reminder, our special audit, RFP is out there. I have not seen any responses as of yet. I did post it on the WhatsApp page, I was like, all right, have at it. Like, please share this with anybody, and so, it's on the website, I put it on our Facebook page, sent it to the board, so I feel like it has been circulated, so we're hoping that we will get responses. January 15th is our deadline, so we have nine more days. I have not seen any responses or questions even come in, so. I don't know if they generally wait till the last minute, but we may want to start thinking about what happens if we don't get responses.
Thank you, and we have no community, and I'd like to go into non-public session at 8:55.
I'll make a motion.
Manifest are good, we have.
Yep, they're all set.
Awesome, great, thank you.
And second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Aye, aye, aye. Five, zero, zero. The dis, non-public session, the dismissal, dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him, unless the employee affected has the right to a meeting and requests that the meeting be open, in which case, the request shall be granted. The hiring of any person as a public employee matters, which, if discussed in public, would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Yes.
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 Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Aye.